A call to order, and we will do a pledge of allegiance. Once our flag comes on, just wait a few seconds, we'll be patient.
Let's see.
I'm Cindy.
There we go. And I'll go ahead and start. I'm sorry, I've lost. There it is. Okay, I'll go ahead and leave with the pledge of allegiance. Everyone go ahead and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic.
For which we stand.
Which it stands, one nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God, indivisible. Liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all. Thank you for that. And then let's go ahead and do a roll call for the record. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Trustee Withrow.
Aye.
Trustee Handy.
Here.
Trustee Brown. I saw her.
I see her.
Just come back to her.
We'll, we'll come back. Trustee Gonzalez-Ewen.
Yep.
Trustee Weinstein.
Well, I should be trustee Weinstein, but it says Trusty Natalie Feller Reese.
I will change your name momentarily.
And Meredith can't hear anyone speaking on hers. She's, she wrote.
Okay, and trustee Reese.
Aye.
President Bonilla.
Here.
Okay, and trustee Brown is having audio visual difficulties, but is here.
She says, can you hear anything? I can't hear anyone speak. Maybe she should close it and rejoin.
Would be my suggestion to, to close out of Zoom and re-log in perhaps.
Mark Hewitt indicated that, that we could pin people and they would move to the front, but can you pin more than one person? Can you pin a group?
That I don't know.
All right. For further research, I suppose, for our next meeting. Yeah.
The only other way, the only other way is if we log in and leave it on mute when we leave the closed session because it's the first login that goes onto the first screen. But she found another way around it because we were coming on, but we couldn't see any of the trustees.
Let's give trustee Brown, he should come in back. See if we can hear her.
She's on.
Can you hear us trustee Brown?
I can hear now. Sorry, guys. I was just having a little technical difficulty.
Fantastic.
Thank you and welcome.
President Bonilla, you have a call.
Thank you so much. We will move to item 2.4 and do a report from action taken in closed session. Madam Vice President.
Sure, Madam President. At tonight's closed session, the board voted on the following items. Recommendation to approve the chancellor's appointment of Leo Ahmed as the interim vice chancellor of finance administration, district office effective October 13, 2020, at 195,988 annually until Dr. Carla Walter, who is currently serving as the interim chancellor, returns to her permanent position. Motion, withrow, second, Weinstein, eyes six, withrow, Handy, Gonzalez-Ewen, Weinstein, Reese, and Bonilla, no's zero, abstentions zero, absent one, Brown. Second action was a recommendation to approve the chancellor's appointment of Lloyd Roberts as the interim special assistant to the chancellor chief of staff, district office, effective October 13, 2020, at 184,460 annually until the position is fulfilled on a permanent basis. Motion, withrow, seconded by Weinstein, eyes six, withrow, Handy, Gonzalez-Ewen, Weinstein, Reese, and Bonilla, no's zero, abstentions zero, and one absent, Brown. And Madam President, that concludes the actions from closed session.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. We'll move to approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
And moved and second, and we'll do roll call. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Ewen.
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein.
Yes.
Trustee Reese.
Yes, but Madam President, may I move 7.4 off of consent?
7.4 has been, yeah, for the record, 7.4 has been moved to. I'm assuming you want it in action?
Yes, please.
Okay, great.
And President Bonilla.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda approved?
Okay, thank you. We'll move to item 2.6, approval of the minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Thank you, and we will take roll call.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Ewen.
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein.
Yes.
Vice President Reese.
Yes.
And President Bonilla.
Yes.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. We're moving to item 2.7, associated student government report. Madam Vice President, do we have students available to give their reports?
Yes, we do. We have Liam Zoo from Berkeley City College, and I believe that that's all I have on my list. Liam, are you in the room?
Yes, I am.
Great.
All right. Thank you, Madam Vice President. Hello, Madam President, trustees. I would like to give a present, or, and a report on ASBCC progress in past two weeks. So we have linked up with our student ambassadors and have started planning, executing our projects amongst the various focus teams. While a couple of teams have just begun coordinating, others of us are making steady progress. Most notably, the student engagement team has met on several occasions and is devising some fun community activities for students. At the same time, the team is also working with the political science general education group towards launching a series of CC to Cal alumni panels for semester. The civic engagement team is, in the past week, hosted a watch party for the VP debate, and we also offered a presentation of our very own ECC student voter guide, which contains information on ballot measures as well as voter reg and mailing ballot key points. The team is also currently working towards finalizing two more events. One for voter phone and text banking and the other for a civic-related trivia night. And the ASBCC would like to recommend for all campuses collaborations between the student council and the faculty. We know that at this time, it has been a struggle for student engagement, both from the student government side and the faculty side. And it's, we can, I believe that we can create a mutually beneficial relationship if the two sides can come together and work towards creating things for the better of the students. Yeah, moving forward, the ASBCC will continue to update the board with our progress, and we look forward to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Liam. Madam President, that is all we have for students' reports.
Thank you for that, and thank you, Liam, for that report. We will move to classified Senate report.
Karen Fisher is here for that.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello.
Hello, Karen.
Hi, Karen. Great. Good evening, President Bonilla, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Walters, presidents and guests. Tonight, we have one classified Senate campus report. This report comes from the Laney College Classified Senate. The Laney Senate reviewed and approved Laney's institutional self-evaluation report and looks forward to working through shared governance processes with the college and district administration and improving our institution's alignment with standard 3A as it relates to classified staffing and classified professional development. That is the end of the campus reports. Thank you very much for your support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you for that. And we will move to academic Senate report.
Good evening, President Bonilla, members of the Board of Trustees. I'm assuming everybody can hear me. Well, okay, thank you. And to Chancellor Walters and members of the, who are on this panel, the presidents and the guests. Yes, it's been quite a challenge for the ICers and the November letter to be circulated and, you know, our, our senators are looking at it and giving feedback and doing all of the things that they're supposed to do. I look forward to having the letter, no, November letter, sent on time and to hopefully hear by the commission's meeting, I guess, in December, how we did. So I look forward to that. And as we go into next semester and begin to prepare for the, I guess, the virtual visits of accreditation, which is going to be interesting in itself about how do you prepare for the virtual, right? But those issues that are coming before us. I'd like to say that one of our priorities of this year is to really work on our, to work on our participatory governance process to ensure that those things go smoothly and to really try to address the fact that we want everybody to follow all of the APs and the BPs. Our faculty continue to get concerned and raise up issues regarding those. And finally, as we go into the, the rest of the semester, we look forward to seeing the announcements of who's going to be our next two presidents, the COA president and the Laney president. We hope that the forums that have happened and the comments that have been provided to Brandon get to the chancellor and to the boards, so that way they could be of value in that process. The faculty senators are concerned oftentimes that with the finalists, we want to be able to talk with the faculty senators at their institutions that they came from so we could get a better idea of how they interact with their participatory governance colleagues. And so I think something like that needs to occur. So all said and done, we look forward to working with students. I heard the student government from BCC is looking, and I know that Matt Freeman and the rest of the Senate there is looking forward to working with students as well as classified and that all of us do. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Donald Moore. And then we will move to public communication. Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, we have two public speakers, or we have two speakers during the public forum. We have Jennifer Shunowski and we have Chris Widenbach. Jennifer, are you in the room? And then Chris, are you in the room?
I am. Hi, good evening, all. I just have a couple of quick comments. I want to start by congratulating Shirley Slaughter on her retirement. I have not worked with Shirley very much in the course of my tenure as PFT grievance officer and then PFT president, and I always feel like that's kind of good. If I'm not working with you, then everything's going really well. And so I, I've seen all the well wishes and I know that Shirley's been at BCC for a long time, so I congratulate her on her retirement. I hope she has a, has some fun adventures in her future. I also wanted to comment on just one item from tonight's agenda, and that's the back-to-work handbook. So I was, I was happy to see that. I read through it all, and I would just like to put it out in, you know, public comment to remind the district that health and safety conditions are, of course, negotiable items. And so whatever conditions faculty return to, in whatever capacity that is in the spring, we will look forward to returning. We will look forward to seeing our students and seeing each other and, and seeing all of you. And we want to ensure that that's done in a safe way, you know, and in adherence to the contract. Lastly, I want to remind you all to vote. It's election season. You know, there's a lot on this ballot. In addition to the president, of course, we have the opportunity to make some really big changes for our community. There are three propositions that the PFT and Alameda Labor Council have weighed in really strongly. Prop 15, Schools and Communities First, will close a corporate loophole that will bring in billions of dollars for our K through community college schools and our communities. You can join PFT for weekly phone banks. We're phone banking at least once a week with our parent union, the California Federation of Teachers, to try and get Prop 15 passed. So reach out to me if you want to join us. You're welcome. It's pretty fun because you're calling teachers, asking them for our money for schools. So everybody says yes. It's like the best phone bank ever. Prop 16, which repeals Prop 209 from 1996, which prohibited affirmative action. There is a student-led rally this Friday in support, a yes on 16 rally this Friday. Spencer Cooper, ASMC president, is helping to organize that. There's a great lineup. It will be in-person, masked, socially distanced, 4:00 to 8:00 PM Friday at the Lake Merritt Amphitheater. So yes on 16. And finally, Prop 22. Prop 22 tries to overturn AB 5, which gave gig workers some basic workers' rights. So Prop 22, there has been, I think I heard, 200, over $200 million has been spent trying to get Prop 22 passed. And this is not to benefit workers, of course. Money like that doesn't get spent to benefit workers. It gets spent to benefit the, the tech companies that are making all that money off those gig workers. So we're also doing a lot of work, leafleting, flier-ing, you know, a really grassroots movement to vote no on Prop 22. So if you're interested in any of those, any of those topics, outreach work, just let us know and we're, we're happy to have you by our side. Thanks so much and have a great night.
Thank you, Jennifer. Chris Widenbach.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Chris Widenbach, I'm the department chair in the English Department at Laney College and accreditation coordinator at Laney for this cycle. I'm also a member of the Laney Faculty Senate and Laney's DAS representative. And in those combined roles, I would like to express our enthusiasm for the candidate forums that will be happening tomorrow for the position of Laney College president. We have been looking forward to meeting the candidates and turning them slowly over a nice hot grill. In all seriousness, we look forward to some open, honest dialogue regarding this position that is so important to us. Whomever is hired will be coming into a role whose predecessor set the bar very high and moved the college far forward in terms of instructional, sorry, in, in terms of institutional effectiveness. I would also like to express how much we've got, we share in the Senate's a renewed commitment to adherence to the established hiring processes and protocols and how much we appreciate the administrators at the district who have upheld the values and policies of participatory governance. On a slightly different note, I've been very fortunate to be part of a couple of planning groups. One which goes by the, the name Black Minds Matter at Peralta and has participated in shaping the security and safety, the community security and safety network or system that will replace the Alameda County Sheriff's Office. Another, I'm not sure how many people have heard about it, but we might be getting a taste of it. taste of it next Tuesday at the professional day. I believe there will be a workshop session, I think with the title Difficult Dialogues involved. And I just urge everyone to kind of keep your ear out for the communications from these two groups. The work of Black Minds Matter at Peralta is deep, holistic, and essential, and the difficult dialogues are the same. And it's really Peralta people putting their best foot forward. Thank you all.
Thank you.
President, that is all we have for our public speakers.
Thank you so much, and thank you to both of the speakers. We'll move into chancellor's report. And chancellor, I will turn this section over to you. Oh, you're on mute.
I'm on mute. Very much. President Bonilla, hello, everyone. VP Reese and Board of Trustees members and cabinet members, colleagues, visitors, friends, all of the Peralta community, good evening. We are going to have our reports this evening from our different presidents, and I, of course, will do what I, I'm sort of setting up a pattern of going after the presidents. So I know that one of our presidents is, has a video that he would like to share, and I'm just wondering if Dr. Johnson, if you have your, your tech house in order and if you're ready to go.
Okay, with a little help from my colleagues to demonstrate and underscore how collegial we are. So my colleague, Dr. Angelica Garcia, will be helping me. So I'll, I'll dispense with my formal report. I'll just, just give you a little bit of context. I just want, hopefully you guys will indulge me for like three minutes. It's recently, we had very, two very dear Merritt employees experience family losses in their, in, in, in their ranks, and they went out on bereavement. And I was really moved in an effort to bring them a bit of solace and comfort on, some of our students on their very own. And unbeknownst to the two individuals who were out on bereavement, created what I felt was a pretty touching video tribute. And as many of us at Merritt College looked at it, I came to realize that the message of fortitude and connection and, and, and love is really something that we could all use right now. So it's about three minutes, and I think that it, it really speaks to us doing our best to navigate these difficult times. So my foray into video, go ahead. So just in the spirit of, you know, when the world, because the world will open back up again, and we will be in each other's presence again, I just thought it was a very timely and appropriate, and does a very gracious gesture on their part, not only to bring some comfort to our two classified employees, but just to share with the district and all of you as well. So see you again soon.
Yeah, thank you for that. That was beautiful. It was beautiful to see all the faces, all the students' faces, for sure. Very touching.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right, Dr. Besikov.
Chancellor, members of the board and colleagues in education, good evening. I'd like to start my report this evening with some words of gratitude. We heard Terrence Fisher in the Classified Senate Report mention the Classified Senate's approval of Laney's ICer, and I'm pleased to report to everyone that our institutional self-evaluation report did seek approval or gain approval, excuse me, by our shared governance groups last, we, our college council last week. So I'm very pleased to report on that, as well as all the efforts and the input that have gone into the special report for November. And just again, want to commend and appreciate all those who put forward the effort that they have so far. I guess I, my next, my next update is a medal-winning update, if you will. In 2018, the Asian Pacific American Student Success Program, or APAS, at Laney collaborated with our enrollment services office to create a multilingual welcome video. It introduces prospective students to Laney College and features over a dozen students representing the cultural and cultural richness of the campus and of Oakland. This video was entered into the National Collegiate Advertising Awards National Competition, and I am pleased to report that the video was just awarded the gold medal in its category. So without further ado, I would like to go ahead and share with all of you this gold medal-winning video.
Your future starts here.
Get ready!
Get ready for Laney art!
Get ready for Laney spirit!
Wherever you go!
Prepare to be a mate!
We can't wait to meet you!
Welcome to Laney Valley!
As with many things at Laney, this recognition comes as the result of collaboration. And I would like to thank and appreciate and congratulate Doctors David Lee and Mildred Lewis, APAS counselor, counselors Nancy Chang, Amy Wong, and Ashley Flores, APAS staff assistant Weishan Su, and APAS student ambassador Manny Huang for their part in this prestigious award. So the, this week brings to an end the first half of our semester here in Peralta, which means at Laney College that next week we will have a number of late start classes beginning. And in an effort to boost enrollment, Gary Albury, our Director of Student Activities and Campus Life, has teamed up with Student Services Staff Assistant Katrina Santos, as you will hear, who has a hidden talent, and our Public Information Officer Lorena Baldazo, Baldazo, to launch a social media takeover on Instagram, and this has happened the last five Mondays. With direct alerts to our 2,831 Instagram followers, our distinguished DJ Katrina Santos broadcasted five different shows and between songs provided details about late start classes. I just want to say thank you to all of our colleagues in Student Services, as well as our Public Information Officer, for the collaboration that has resulted in the dissemination of our late start offerings to our community. And with that, I'll go ahead and conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Besikov. All right, how about Dr. Garcia for Berkeley City College?
Great. Buenas tardes. Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees, interim chancellor, my colleagues and community. I'm feeling really moved by the, the videos. I am going to conclude my remarks with one short one, but I'd like to begin by sharing that Berkeley City College has also, over the past few weeks, been circulating not only the special report for which the board will conduct your first read for this evening, but also our ICers, and that it has been supported, though we're still making continuous edits. And I'd like to take a moment to thank accreditation liaison officer, VPI Cooney Hay, faculty ALO Charlotte Lee, and some key support staff, Pumi Sayabong and Ji-Jang Bertuso, for just the long hours of work. I'd also like to share very briefly, and more information to come hopefully at the next board meeting, but AACNU invited Berkeley City College to be one of five colleges featured in a winter publication. Berkeley City College is the only West Coast college, and of course, then the only California community college that is going to be featured in this book, which is titled Community Colleges: Anchors of Democracy. And the feature of this story is telling the Berkeley City College story for how we support students, how we support the community. And in the timing of our interview, the focus groups of faculty and students, classified professionals and administrators also shared what it was like to, or what it is like, to run a college and run our classes and student services during a pandemic with COVID-19, during a period of racial unrest, and with ongoing just daily pressures and operation, operational needs. So I'm looking forward to sharing that, but I did get a sneak peek at the chapter today, and it's looking very good, and I'm, I'm looking forward to sharing the final publication. Again, especially given that community colleges do play such a key role, and I believe truly do serve as anchors of our democracy. Two more things, and then I'm going to close. The Professional Development Committee, led by faculty member Susan Khan and a broad campus constituency group, has been working very hard to develop a midsemester flex that addresses ongoing conversation and work on issues of equity and racial justice, on the implementation of guided pathways, accreditation, and has done a really good job of, with classified staff input to ensure that we have sessions to meet all constituency groups. So we're looking forward to that day coming up. And lastly, I'd like to close with the spirit of, you know, our teachers are, our students are our teachers, and in the spirit and following Merritt College, the following video that I'm going to share with you is just about a little over a minute, and it is the Learning Resources Center students making a video by students for students about the services available. And that will conclude my remarks. So if you will just indulge me, I'm going to set it up here.
The LRC is now online. If you need help with your classes, we're here for you.
There are 30 to 60-minute one-on-one tutoring sessions.
You can also join your classmates in a group tutoring session with your in-bed tutor.
And there are private study rooms.
For you to use all day. You can come with your classmates, your friends, or by yourself.
The LRC offers tutoring for a lot of courses.
We offer help in math and science.
Psychology and ESOL.
CIS, Canvas, and more.
The LRC is open from 12 to 8:00 PM, Mondays and Wednesdays, and 10 to 6:00 PM, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays.
Want to meet with a tutor? It's as easy as one, two, three. Step one, fill out the appointment request form. Step two, the front desk will email you, suggest a few options for your appointment. And step three, you and the front desk will figure out a time and will send you confirmation email with the Zoom link.
When it's time for my appointment, all I do to access the online LRC is click this link in my email.
Welcome to the online LRC. How can I help you?
Hey, this is my first time here. How does this work?
So this is a lot like the physical LRC. Right now, we're at the front desk, and there's rooms set aside for tutors to meet with students and students to meet with each other all day.
So what can I do for you?
I'm here to meet with Taylor.
Great, I'll move to Taylor's room.
You can reach us at bcc-lrc@peralta.edu. For more information about the LRC, go to beat.ly/pcc-lrc. Again, we are open Monday and Wednesday from 12 to 8:00, and Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday from 10 to 6:00.
This is a free service to all BCC students.
You might have a tutor in your math class, so look out for them.
Come on by.
We'd love to see you.
See you at the LRC.
Bye!
Bye!
Thank you. And with that, that concludes Berkeley City College remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. Okay, and now we have Dr. Don Miller from College of Alameda.
Good evening, President Bonilla, Chancellor Walter, trustees and wonderful colleagues. So excited to be here this evening with you and sharing just briefly some of the happenings at College of Alameda. I will have to say that my, my presidential colleagues are showing me up. I don't have a video tonight, but that's okay. In the future, we've got more coming for celebration of our 50th anniversary. We're, we're working on the format, going to have lots of content coming in the future. But I wanted to focus tonight really quickly on an update. We finished our special report, which is submitted to you tonight for first reading, and received approval of our college council last week at its special meeting on the 7th. It's also been shared widely across campus in open forums, sent to the senate leadership for classified sent to the Senate leadership for classified Senate, and the academic senate also had a chance to review. And we got great content, great feedback from several faculty members, Senate leaders, and others that contributed. I wanted to give a shout out to Dominique Benavides, our Director of Research and Planning, who spent an incredible amount of time with data tables and evidence. Couldn't have done that work without her. And then moving on to the ICER, we have our draft completed with some final pieces to put in place. And then Dr. Vasconcelos will be sharing out the ICER in the week of the 19th and the 26th to campus. And we're taking a bit of a unique approach. Dr. V is going to be sharing the ICER in pieces, more digestible standards, rather than trying to have people read the entire thing all at once. So we'll be moving forward with that format, and then it will go to, for final approval, to the Senate's thereafter. After we do the open forums with the smaller pieces that are more digestible for the community. So we look forward to that feedback and that input in the next couple of weeks. And it's very exciting for us. And I would say also that I want to really highlight the incredible work of our library resources team. They have, starting at the very beginning of the semester, they started our curbside pickup program, where they have been passing out Chromebooks, library checkout materials, calculators and other devices to students three days a week. They have an incredible system set up for curbside distribution to students. They've passed out over 100 Chromebooks to students that needed them this fall. And I wanted to note publicly the names of our incredible folks at the library. Cheryl Peel helped early on in summer, and the rest of the team, Caitlin Gilbert, Glenda Gardner, Lilia Tavasoli, and Bukalter, and Jane McKenna. They just all did incredibly hard work to make that happen. And we're so proud of the work that they do with the students on a daily basis. We continue to address items related to the Chancellor's Office Call to Action. We had an open dialogue earlier last week where we started to talk about climate in the classroom. We wanted to also welcome back Myron Jordan, who's serving as Acting Dean of Liberal Studies and Language Arts, Angie Harris, we're so excited to have as our new Financial Aid Director, and invite all of you to Thursday, October 15th, 11 a.m. to 12 p.m. to our Latinx Heritage Month celebrations, as they continue and have a discussion on leaders in higher education sharing their educational journey narratives and discuss the Latinx student experience. So I'll put that link in the chat for everyone. But thank you for the opportunity to join you this evening, and we look forward to talking to you more about the special reports.
Thank you, Dr. Miller, and thank you all presidents for your reports. Wow, I think people who are listening and folks on the panel, there's a tremendous amount of commitment in this district to working on all of the matters that are really important, and also at the same time, you know, allowing space for humor and allowing space for the emotional aspect of what it means to be in these times without minimizing them. So thank you so much for all of your work. And, you know, I'm only going to say a couple of words about the accreditation process. And as I said, I've said this to other people, there's a scene in The Fugitive where Tommy Lee Jones finally catches his man, if you will. He's chased him all over creation, and he's found him to be, you know, he's cleared of all charges, and Tommy Lee Jones basically says, "Ooh, you know I'm glad because this has really taken a lot of my efforts." So all of our folks are working tremendously diligently, and we are going to get to the finalization of all of these accreditation special reports and the ICERS. We are moving through the participatory governance processes. We have lots of eyes on these documents, and I want to thank the Board of Trustees for their engagement as well with these documents and the processes. And to let everyone know, there was a question as to whether or not the commission would be visiting after the special reports are submitted in November, and they will be doing a virtual visit in light of the special reports. We don't know exactly what the date of that special visit will be, but as soon as we know, we will, you know, share that information widely so everybody is aware. And some of the, you know, some of the visit, the context of the visit, quote, "depends on the content of the report," unquote. So we're hoping for positive reception and a wonderful outcome from the visits, and looking forward to making the ACCJC standards integral to and part of the fabric of the Peralta Community College District and all of our colleges, because we really do love and want to support our students and our faculty and staff. Just really briefly, many of our faculty are really excited about offering labs and science labs and so forth, and we've been given guidance by the State Chancellor's Office about how to go about holding those labs for the spring. So if you have indoor lectures or student gatherings, they can, they have to be 100 people or 25% of the capacity, whichever's less. And some courses, like labs and art studios, can be open at regular capacity. And so they still want us to conduct courses and classes and labs virtually whenever possible, but it is really good news to see, you know, a little bit of a, you know, light coming in through the COVID aspects that we're dealing with. So our district will continue to comply with the rules that we're faced with and all the regulatory requirements in the COVID-19 pandemic. And the only other note that I'm going to make here right now is the idea of the parcel tax plans. And we, the presidents and the participatory governance groups worked very diligently on putting together those plans. And so we realize that after they come to the board at the next meeting, you know, the parcel tax committee will welcome them with open arms, and then the presidents and others will be providing a report and so forth. So again, I want to thank the participatory governance groups, the PFT constituents, and everyone else who helped to make sure that we move forward with this really important administrative procedure to get these on. So I'm really, you know, I'm really excited about the work that's being done and the progress that's being made in the district. And so President Bonilla, I will hand it back over to you.
Well, thank you so much for that, Chancellor. And, you know, presidents, what can I say? Every meeting, you all just bring life to the screen. And I think you're incredible, you're innovative, you're intuitive. And I always say this, now this time, you know, in the past, I've always said to you, you can't tell that your campuses are shut down. This time, I could tell, but the shift that you made online to bring about love, caring, opportunity, support for students, and all the other critical updates, absolutely amazing. Thank you so much. And I'll open it up for any of the other trustees who would like to make some comments. I see trustee Weinstein in the queue. Let's see. Okay, can you unmute? There you go.
Thank you. I just want to say the presidents and what they're describing, what the students are doing, making their own video, which I just thought was so heartfelt, and the welcome video, which I thought was terrific. I had seen before, and I thought that was terrific. I mean, this place is just extraordinary, and the presidents are extraordinary. And I just want to thank you all for cheering this place up, because it's not an easy time during COVID. And every time I see what you are able to create and what the students are able to create, I'm just thrilled. So I just want to thank you, and I also want to thank, I think his name is Liam, who's the head of the Students at BCC, the Student Association. I want to thank him for doing the civic engagement that they're doing there. It's just terrific. So thank you all very, very much. It's an honor for me to be a trustee here.
Thank you, trustee Weinstein. If there are no other comments, I'd like to move us to our next section. So the first item under informational items is the discussion of our implementation plan for board goal. And I'd like to welcome Dr. Helen Benjamin, who is our presenter on this item.
Yes. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. And I just flipped through to see everybody. It's good to see all of you, even those of you who have your picture up there. You look good. And I really, I didn't hear all of the presidents' reports, but the ones I heard were just, made me kind of long to be back in it. But just only for a second, only for a second. That's what it's all about, our students. I just love to see them and hear. And no matter what's going on at the top, I don't care what's happening, our students come to us every day. And see, there I go with the plural again, including myself. But the students come every day, and it is obvious that the district of Peralta is ready for them. So round of applause for the presidents and all you do. Thank you so much. I don't want to take much time here. I won't go through these documents, but I'm really wanting a reaction, a response from the board to the format, so that you can see how we are trying to implement your goals, to make sure that what you have stated you want to happen through the development of these goals and the key actions to ensure that that happens. And when I say "we," I mean Chancellor, the Chancellor's Cabinet. I have met with them twice, and we've been working on this plan so that when you conduct your self-evaluation in the spring or June or whenever you plan to do that, we can go back to this document and see all the things you said you would do. We can validate because we have a plan as to when they are going to be done and who is going to do them. That's in the first document, which we're calling the implementation plan. And I want to thank the Chancellor's Cabinet for allowing me to come in and spend time with them so that we can work on this. And then the second document is one you already had, but we've enhanced it so that you have a calendar. And I don't know, is, can Brandon drive this to show? Or can somebody project the calendar anyway?
You want to see the calendar?
Yes. Step first page, so that... Yes.
Can you see it?
Yes, thank you. And I'm assuming everybody else can see it. But if you look at that first page, you can see that we have all the meeting dates, retreat dates, and all that. And then we have the type of meeting that it is, and then the topic for discussion. And then in the fourth column, we have the board goal to which that item refers. And so we're trying to make sure that you get all the reports you say you want in your goals and anything else, so that it's cross-referenced. And we make sure by using this calendar that we capture all of the information for you, have it presented, and you have the opportunity to ask questions and create. And in some cases, the staff will have to come back to you to ensure exactly what it is you want, to find out from you, so that there's clarity. When you say you want to receive reports on different things, before they go out and do those reports, they'll check in with you to make sure they're developing for you what it is you want. So there are two documents, the implementation plan and then the calendar that is a reflection of what you will see. Are there, is this, have I confused you totally? Or do you have any questions about what we're trying to do here? Is it clear as mud or spring water?
So trustees, I can't, I can't see you in hands raised, but please do go ahead and chime in at your will.
But I, excuse me, President Bonilla, may I suggest that there are several documents showing on the screen? And perhaps we can stop share and maybe reshare just a single document?
Yeah, let me see if I can.
Done.
There you go.
I just did that.
And then maybe a bit. There we go.
And that's the one that's the calendar. So today is, can you scroll down, Brandon, to October? Let's see, 13th. And this is still in draft form, so there may be some things that are there. It may not be quite accurate, but I think the annual financial statement is there, and that coincides with 4D, Goal 4D, which has to do with finances and receiving reports so that you're updated on what's going on in the district financially. And an update on OPAB. And so does that make sense to you, what we're trying to do? So we can track all of this?
Yes, very much so.
I think, I heard trustee Reese, are there any other comments that you'd like to share with Dr. Benjamin right now, trustee?
If this works for you, or if you prefer something different.
So I like this particularly because it does have some critical, crucial information on here, especially around the standards for the board goals. So this happens to work for me, but I've also been looking at this document perhaps a little longer than some of the other trustees. And so I definitely want to make sure that the other, that all of the trustees have some input on this. Trustee Weinstein. Somebody unmute. Okay, let's try again to unmute.
All right. Well, I like this. And the reason why I like this is because it focuses on the very specific issues that we have to resolve or work through. And so it isn't kind of a general, a lot of times, these calendars are very general. And sometimes they hit what we're doing, and sometimes they don't. But this is very specific to the things that we are very concerned about. You know, it says the budget, the first reading, the second reading, the planning, et cetera, et cetera. Clariac presentation, I mean, it's all the specific things that I think we really need to be paying attention to, rather than doing it in a slapdash manner. We know what's ahead of us, and we know what to expect and what to work on. So I think it's terrific, and I think it's going to help us a lot. So.
Okay. And it helps to organize the staff too. They know what's coming up. And some of these things come up annually, but it's a way to organize. The other issue here is that you have not scheduled your, it's my understanding that you've not scheduled your meetings for spring yet. So we don't have those dates. But all of this, I'm going to turn this over to Carla in like another week and they can do whatever they want with it, continue with. But we just want to make sure that you are okay with what we're trying to do here.
I see trustee Gonzalez in the queue.
Thank you. Could you talk, Dr. Benjamin, a little bit about the other document that is in our folder? And how relates to the calendar document?
Yes.
The other one, I actually liked a little better. It was just a little more narrative form.
Right. I'm going back to that one. I wanted you to see the calendar first. Kind of organizing. Okay, so if there are no more comments on this one, we can go back to the implementation plan, which is a little harder to do. Can someone put that one up, please?
Working on it right now. There you go.
Oh, okay, Mark. Thank you.
Yeah, and I bet it's pretty small, so let me make it a little bigger.
Yes. So, what I did on this one was to highlight in yellow all the things that I think require a retreat or study session on your part. But what you'll see is that I added two columns to this one. One with the plan slash notes and the other is the date by which it would be done, completed. So you'll see, so Board Goal 1, Educate, Question Success, 1A, the key action, receive disaggregated data, et cetera. We decided that you will receive that report on December the 8th. You will receive such a report in the fall and in the spring. We have to go back and put a spring date, but we didn't put one because you don't have the calendar set up yet. And then engage in meaningful discussions. That needs to happen monthly, because I know that was one of Karen's things about, we don't talk about our students enough. So we wanted to make sure we get in that. And the staff will ensure, Carla will ensure that those discussions take place. Ensure availability of adequate classes to meet student needs. Board participates and recruiter study session to include information on factors affecting class scheduling. That was one of the things you thought you needed more information on schedule building and things like that. And if I am not, and this would happen in the fall and the spring during the budget presentation. So you'll get that coming up, I think. But if you go on down, scroll down, engage in district strategic planning process, that's E above. So you will need to participate in that. It's already started, but it's not completed. There are still some activities that need to happen. So you would participate in the planning retreat, review and approve first and second readings. Because you'll recall, you had an issue around your mission statement and all that. It didn't get approved. So there is still some work that needs to happen regarding that strategic plan. And you have to be involved in it. We don't have dates for it yet. But you can see where we're going. Is it making sense to you now, trustee Gonzalez, yet?
I thought that the planning document was actually really good. And it was just the interaction between this document and then the calendar document. Was there some obvious way that those interacted? I mean, I can get into the calendar document. I can go to, you know, 5E or 6E or whatever it is.
Right.
And, you know, maybe it's just my mind works, but the implementation plan was just a little more intuitive for me to follow. But they both make sense.
Yeah, the connection is that this date, so provide direction to the chancellor, then on this, this is a big one. I need to go back though, because I need to ask you something. Can you go back to the previous one to F? In the one, no, 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 no. In the implementation plan document. So F, under one, number one, at the very beginning. One more, yeah.
There we go.
Right here. So this was one of the key actions that you want to state it. And I can't remember exactly which one of you it was. View each board action through the lens of students' access, equity, and success, and make adjustments as needed to meet this criterion. Now, that's something, how do you think you can do that? You're going to have to be reminded every time. You're saying each board action that you want to see it through the lens of student access. So that's something that you're going to have to be mindful of at all times. And then when we get ready to do your self-evaluation, how do we know that you've done this? How will we know? On engaging in the student development strategic plan, that'll be easy. You'll attend the meetings, you'll approve the document in the end, you participate in the process. What do you do with F? That was the one thing I wanted to ask you. How do you perceive that that can be done?
Trustee Gonzalez.
Dr. Benjamin, I just think that's such an important question. And I think that it comes down to what our metrics are.
Yes.
How do we measure access, success, equity? And it's got to be a measurement that's more interesting than the measurements of the SCIF, frankly. I think the SCIF is a, it's a basic starting place. It points you in some kinds of directions. But it really doesn't tell you that much about the lived experience of an actual student. And I was raising this question earlier about, just before the closed session, about how do we get in and really measure the barriers and the aids that promote success or that get in the way of success? And one of the things that I was pointing to was the, I think a lot of people are familiar with this, the HOPE study that looked at homelessness, hunger, transportation. That study, that data has been replicated in a number of places. But you can look and say, all right, across California community colleges, we know that roughly half of our students are housing insecure. Somewhere between 15% and 20% are homeless in any given year. We've got some data that's specific to Peralta that was done by, I think, a graduate student somewhere, maybe a doctoral student out in Sacramento, looked specifically at Peralta. And it just strikes me that if we don't pay attention to those questions and then begin to measure those questions, we're going to really have a hard time then trying to figure out how to affect the outcomes. Because it's not just, it's not just the things that we can do in classrooms. I think, you know, so.
It's both quantitative and qualitative data.
It's quantitative and qualitative, but it's also different data. It's not simply persistence.
No, 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 no. That's where the qualitative comes in. Yes.
It's, so, you know, we could look and we could say, what percentage of our students in fact are housing insecure? What's going on right now in COVID with those students? And how does that in fact affect their ability to succeed? And so, just, you know, when we look at F, I think what I would love to hear in a little more rich detail is how is it that in the shared governance process, when we pull together all of the people, the students, faculty, staff, the administrators, and they think about this question about access, equity, success, what is it that they think is worth looking at above and beyond the metrics for SCIF? Or above and beyond the metrics for, you know, the meaningful stuff that people have and they live their experience and an instructor is interacting with the faculty member or with the student or the student government leaders are interacting with their constituents? And what is it that they're seeing that we should be paying attention to? To help then the board say, well, what is the lens that we should be paying attention to?
Okay.
That's what I'm thinking.
We talked a bit about, you have a COVID section here. And so you're going to get a report and Siri's working on that. So I know Siri's ears attuned to this conversation. And this gives her some direction in what she's going to need to do there. So that, I think that's helpful. We're going to meet one more time to try to flesh this out. Because every single thing here will not be in that calendar. But all the things here that can be, will be, we have to have another means. So if we can roll down a little bit more, Mark, to the next section. This is the... Okay.
Benjamin, if we can go back to 1C for a second. So I understand that, you know, we want to do a deep dive in ensuring the availability of adequate classes to meet student needs. And we want that in the form of a retreat or study session. But is there, and do other districts, and should we actually have a kind of before and after? You know, where, so we've done this, we are planning to do this actually for the next semester. But then it's the, again, it's the follow-through in terms of how did that work out for us? And what do we need to do going forward? Because I think we get the reports, we do this, but then, but we don't close the loop. And I think that that's a really important part of what we need to do. How do we figure into that? Or do we figure into that?
Yeah. And you're talking about trend data.
Right, right.
And it has to be over time before you see the difference and all that. That's why you have to be consistent in the data that you choose. And you have to know what the interventions or practices are and just keep track of it.
Yeah. And you know, and then maybe the other question, I don't know if this is the appropriate place to ask you, but since we are talking about this, maybe it is. And let me know if not. So as I think about ensuring the availability of adequate classes to meet student needs, I think about the productivity that we have put ourselves on again, which is a 17.5, even though for the past four years, we've been at 13.78, 14.15. So, you know, so if we keep putting ourselves at 17.5, we are planning for 17.5, but that contributes to our, so that's problematic. Especially if our trend data has put us at 13, 14.
Yeah, it's problematic, especially when it comes to your finances. Is that what?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So that's huge, right?
Yes.
I think that that is where we, there needs to be discussion about that. Because in terms of our finances, that's incredibly major.
Yes.
And that's the reason why that's here.
So you can understand the specific issues related to small classes, large classes. And then you need to look at, I mean, well, there's a lot of interesting data you can look at. Student performance in certain types of classes. And what works better, what are the different methods? I mean, there's just so much. And you can't talk about it just in a board meeting. I think you just need some time to do a deep dive.
Okay, okay.
All right. So can we move up?
Yeah.
Down. And then you have your diversity, equity, inclusion. I said it wouldn't be long, but I think you have the idea. And then the last section is Goal 6, which has to do with your, we're doing final accreditation already, with your development and how you guys work together. And that's where we have a lot of yellow, because we, some of it needs to happen in a setting that, where we have a little more time to work through some issues on delegation of authority. Go down, please. A little more. The hiring of chancellor, you're doing that. Identify, get a common understanding. So all those retreat things you need to work on. And then your board is changing. And then J, I just want to pause at J for a moment. Identify issues, items requiring strategic oversight not listed in board goals and monitor accordingly. So that's the kind of catch-all for other things that you think of or we might have forgotten. We don't have technology in there. That's an activity. And we don't have your board development activities. We don't have those as specific goals. So that's the catch-all category. But that's the kind of the plan. And I'll have maybe one more meeting with the cabinet and we'll work some more to get some of the other things filled in and get some dates established. But we're going to need dates from you for when you can do a study session. Because I think the goal, President Bonilla, is to get some of this done by December 31st.
That's correct.
Okay. So that concludes my little presentation. I'm sorry I took so much time.
Thank you.
Yeah, this was good. This was good. Thank you so much for reviewing. And we know that it's been a very long day and late for you. So unless the trustees have any other questions for you. And Dr. Benjamin, is it okay if there are other thoughts and questions that they be shared with you? How would you like that information to come to you?
They know how to reach me. The board members know.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good meeting. Don't stay too long.
And as we go down the informational items, Chancellor, I will hand over each of the other informational items at your discretion on how you would like to present or frame for the board each of the informational items in front of us.
Okay, thank you, President Bonilla. What I would like to do is to consider item 3.2 with the budget matters. And then, once we're done with that, we'll go through and look at the items 3.3 through 3.6. And we have Dr. Jim Riggs here. So when we're ready to go to those items, I'll give a little overview and background. But for our item 3.2, this is the adoption budget for 2021. It's being presented by our acting interim vice chancellor of administration, Adil Ahmed. It's being presented to you at this date because we have the executive order from the state chancellor's office allowing us to adopt a budget by October 31st. And so that's what we have before you. This would be your second reading or second seeing, if you will, of this budget. It will come back for final adoption and a public hearing on October 27th. So with that, I will ask interim vice chancellor of finance and administration, Adil Ahmed, to go forward.
Good evening, President Bonilla, Vice President Spies, and members of trustees, colleagues, Chancellor Walter, and members of the public. First, I would like to thank my staff, the finance staff, for doing a great job and completing the budget and the year-end closing in a timely fashion, even though we were in a difficult situation. And I want to also thank Mark Johnson for completing, producing this beautiful budget book that is better than what we used to produce in the past. So I will ask Mark to please, this is our adopted budget for fiscal year 2021. Go down, please. Next slide. Next slide, please.
I think he has to bring it. There we go.
Yes. Okay, this is our agenda. I'm going to talk about or present to you the COVID-19 revenues, adopted budget, the SCIF, the expenditures and projections, the 50% law, and if you have any question at the end. the expenditures and projections, the fifty percent law, and if you have any question at the end. Next slide, please. This is the CARE funds COVID nineteen block grant that we received, or we received some of those grant in twenty in nineteen twenty and twenty twenty. We receive for the CARE Act fund seven point seven million, but in reality, we received three point eight million, which was the uh, the association portions. We omitted to apply for the colleges portions. Uh, thank God, that was been extended and it has been approved and we get the funding and the fund was transferred to G five. So the money is available. So we have seven point seven millions and we received also the COVID nineteen nineteen block grant, one point eight millions, uh, federal over eight hundred thousand, state apportionment over nine hundred thousand. So in overall, we had nine point five million dollars in twenty twenty. So since we had an agreement and we signed an MOU with the faculty for this stipend, we reserve the state apportionment, the over nine hundred thousands, to pay a portion of those of this MOU, that is one point two millions. So we're gonna pay nine hundred ninety two from the state apportionment and the remaining will be paid for our contingency reserves. Expense as June thirty twenty twenty. In twenty twenty, we just spent on the CARES Fund federal portions, sixty six thousand, and that's BCC what's spent on the student side. And the COVID nineteen block grant federal, we spent eight hundred eight or on June, on June, on June thirty twenty twenty. So the last uh, column you see here is what we're carrying over for twenty twenty one. So for the federal CARES Act, we have seven point six million that we're gonna carry over. And also, we're gonna carry over the state block grant, which is nine hundred ninety two. Next slide, please. This is the plan that the colleges uh, that is their spending plan, how they're gonna spend the CARES Act funds for twenty twenty one. As you can see by line items and by category, how the district and the colleges will spend the seven point six million. Next slide, please. This is now our unrestricted general fund details. So I wanna go slowly to explain uh, our budget fund one summary. So as you can see, in two thousand nineteen twenty, our adopted budget was in total of one hundred fifty three million. Our unaudited actuals is hundred forty four million. And our budget for twenty twenty one is hundred forty four. What is the difference between the hundred fifty three million and hundred forty four million? We have to reclass the retiree benefit to where it belong, post-retiree and pre-retiree. So in overall, we get from the state, six hundred forty five thousand increase on twenty nineteen to uh, twenty twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. If I moved our expenses, as you can see, we had a total, I'm not gonna go by line items, so I'm explaining there. So if you have a question, you can ask me. So we have an adopted budget of hundred four, hundred fifty four million. And we our actual expenditure is a hundred forty three million. And our expense, our budget for uh, twenty twenty one is over hundred forty four. So what's the difference between the hundred fifty four million and the hundred forty three million, the adopted budget and the actual budget? So we move those expenditures that was related to retiree benefit the words belong. In the past, we used to do antifund transfer, we get the reimbursement from the trust fund and we had the expense in the general fund. Therefore, we decided not to do that because that overstated our expenditures when the expense is not for fund one. It belonged to fund ninety four or fund sixty nine. So we had a saving of eleven millions when you compare the hundred fifty four million and hundred forty three million uh, actual unaudited. So we had a fund balance, beginning fund balance on our adopted budget seventeen point one nine million, and we have projected a deficit of one point eight million. Which we were we were projected and ending fund balance of over sixteen millions, which represent ten point thirty seven percent. This ten point thirty seven percent is obtained by dividing the sixteen millions, ending fund balance by the total expenditures, total expenses. If you look at our unaudited actuals, we have seven point nine million. Uh, the actual was seven point nine million, seven point nine millions, beginning fund balance, and we have another adjustment. What is this audit adjustment? This adjust as adjustment came from eighteen nineteen. When the auditors come to audit our fiscal year, we already closed a book that they they were auditing. We already submitted our numbers to the state. Therefore, any audit adjustment will go to the next fiscal year. That's what it represents, two point three million. And that's two point three million, it was was coming from a deferral tuition deferral that had never been reversed to revenues. It was in our favor. It was two point three million. And we are and we are projecting an increase and decrease instead of one point eight million deficit, we're projecting a surplus of uh, over six hundred thousand. Which will 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 have an ending fund balance over twenty point nine million, which represent fourteen point sixty one percent. For for uh, for twenty twenty one budget, as you can see, is we're moving the twenty point nine million beginning balance. We have a we have a balanced budget and we we're ending up with the twenty point nine million, even though we have a one point one over one million contingency reserve. This contingency reserve will help in case we have uh, something in emergency that has to be done, we have the fund to move to reallocate. If there is no need, that will go back to the fund balance. Next slide, please, Mark. This is our twenty twenty one unrestricted general fund. The first graph here, it's a it's a summary. As you can see, it make a parallel to spend eighty percent on salary and benefit. And when we combine all the the district and the colleges, this is very important to know, eighty percent is a good numbers. A good college will spend, a good district will spend between eighty to eighty four percent. So we're spending eighty percent on salary and benefit and we're spending our on our uh, reserve for contingency only one percent, other outgoing, one percent, debt services, two percent, and equipment capital outlet is like irrelevant, zero percent. And the next, the next, the next graph here is the details. How we spending uh, our salary and benefit. On classified salary, we're spending twenty one percent. On part-time, we're spending only six percent. We're spending on full academic six, eight, eighteen percent. And we're spending on book on supply, uh, sixteen percent and French benefits, twenty eight percent. Next slide, please. So this is the the SCIF calculations. This this has been implemented in July first, two thousand eighteen. Uh, we had in the past, it was only enrollment that we were paid for. Now they say decided since July first, two thousand eighteen, we have the base enrollment FTS seventy percent statewide. We have the supplemental, which is the count of low income student, twenty percent. And we have the student success of part three camp successful outcome with premium for for outcome of low income student, ten percent is system wide. And this is is good to know that since our school or our district is located in a low income area, that will that help us to sustain in our revenues. Next slide, please. Okay, this is the 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 still is the SCIF that's uh, and it and it's based on the it's based on performance. It's not like before. Now it's based on performance. So the state chancellor office told the district or guaranteed the district that with this new implementation of the SCIF, the district will get the TCR, which mean the total competition revenue of seventeen eighteen adjusted with the collar. That is the guarantee. If you make less than seventeen eighteen plus the collar, they will pay you seventeen eighteen. So that's the guarantee we have from the state chancellor that in case we we go low than seventeen eighteen, we're still gonna get seventeen eighteen plus the collar for eighteen nineteen nineteen twenty. The only thing that we didn't have any collar on twenty twenty one. Next slide, please. So as you can see, the basic allocations, what is the basic allocations? That's the basic allocation for for the four college, for the four college that have over ten, ten thousand FT FTS and under twenty thousand FTS will get over eighteen point eight million. And our FTS is based on three years average. You do your three years average is sixteen point nine, which is a total subtotal of over eighty eight point five million. And then we have our head counts for the supplemental allocations and we have for the students, the student success allocations. Go a little bit down, please, Mark. So the total is a ten million over ten million, the head count for the student supplemental and student success. So now, total SCIF before the whole harmless, we're landing a hundred twenty million. So what is the three point eight? The three point eight is that our guaranteed amount seventeen eighteen plus the call of eighteen nineteen plus the nineteen nineteen twenty is one hundred twenty four million. So they say this paying us a whole harmless three point eight. So we're getting the one twenty four as they've been guaranteed us under under implementation on the SCIF. So we're getting hundred twenty four instead of hundred twenty. And 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 we are working toward these three point eight millions. Uh, the finance department with HR and with the chancellor on how to resolve this uh, shortfall on revenue. But if you if you really look at this shortfall, that represents our collar, two point five percent. If we get our collar, we're getting more than three point eight million. We're getting around four point one million. Since we didn't have a collar in twenty twenty one, now we've been hard, 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 hard harmless, three point eight million. Next slide, please. This is uh, we did this graph. I remember two years ago, the board wanted to know our total revenues. So we have a two hundred eighty two millions revenues excluding the capital outlet, meaning the bounds. So fifty two percent is our restricted fund. The trust fund is fourteen percent and the six general fund is twenty seven percent. And our expenses also, we we believe in we're projecting also two hundred eighty two million expenses excluding the capital outlet. Next slide, please, Mark. So I did this uh, to compare where we're standing in FTS. I did so many years of FTS. So you guys can see, the trustee can see well, in two thousand thirteen fourteen, we were at nineteen thou nineteen point nine thousand FTS and now we are at fifteen point three. So if you look at your shortfall, it's around five thousand, approximately five thousand FTS, and that is roughly twenty five millions lost, I mean shortfall in revenues. But what helped, what helped Peralta is the new formula helped a lot, Peralta, because we are in low income. That's helped us a lot to uh, to 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 minimize uh, the shortfall. That's why we're standing in a good shape. Next slide, please. This is the fifty percent law. Uh, I believe was implemented in nineteen sixty nineteen sixty one in California. Uh, what that mean is that every dollar spent, fifty cents should be spent in the classroom instructors, instructions. So that's that's what it is. And uh, next slide, please. So calculating the fifty percent law, our total education expenses by doing all the all the exclusion that came at the top, which I listed on the on the right hand side, exclusions, those coming at the top. And then we end up with hundred over a hundred thirty two millions. And then there is a second uh, second, what we call uh, exclusions, the lottery, the restricted, the unrestricted lottery funds is deductible, the licensing and fees is excluded, and also the COVID nineteen. They allow us for two years for our last year and this current year, we can anything we pay to the general fund related to COVID nineteen is excluded from the fifty percent law. So we're landing with a total of hundred twenty eight million over a hundred twenty eight point nine million. Uh, our instructional salary and benefit is sixty four point five million. And you do the math, we add a fifty point eleven percent. We're above the fifty percent law. So we meet our requirement for the fifty percent law. Do you have any questions? So I will do my best to respond to your questions. And thank you for listening, trustees and chancellor.
Thank you so much, um, Adil, for that presentation. Chancellor, I'll go ahead and open it up to trustees for any comments, questions, or clarification. Trustee Brown.
Trying to raise my, yeah, I thought it wasn't working. I was trying to raise my. So I have a question about the SCIF and the twenty five million because of the loss of five thousand students and the fact that part of the um, part of the calculation that makes it difficult for high um, cost of living areas like the Bay Area is that the apportionment that we get doesn't offset the costs of uh, providing the educational services and providing the programming to support our students. And even though we have poverty, we which is is partially accounted for under SCIF, we still have a huge cost of living. And so um, it's not that twenty five million is, we're not coming out ahead with that shortfall. We're actually struggling. Um, and so that's one question. Um, I don't see how we're going to be able to address that uh, given the projections that we have before us. And then also, my question from our last uh, board meeting was what percentage uh, of the block grant funds and the CARES Act funds was spent on students? I know that we were able to spend fifty percent on students. That was the minimum required. But I'm still wanting to know how we were putting our students first and how we were serving the students in both the block grant expenditures and the CARES Act funds expenditures. Those are not in the budget. They're they're still lumped together, which was what I asked clarification on at the last board meeting. And I'm wondering if that can be provided.
Yes, trustee Brown, we will we will provide you those what you're requesting. And I'm just gonna give you these informations. Uh, for twenty twenty one, we already spent as of September on the student, two point nine million. I just checked this morning, what the college paid for uh, the portion for the student financial aid, they paid already two point nine million. I don't have, I don't have it by college, but I can provide you those number by college. So if they spend two point nine.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see that.
I would, I would, I would, I would provide you.
Sorry.
I will provide you that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And regarding.
And the second question was the SCIF. Yes.
Yeah, regarding the SCIF, remember that they take only seventy seventy percent of the enrollment, right? So this is our uh, the SCIF is our real revenues. What we're calculating, all this rate is coming from the from the state. We all the rate I'm applying in there is coming from the state. So in reality, because of this thirty percent uh, head count, it helped Peralta because I been to a meeting with the state where they said we could do better because they said the Peralta is in a low income area. They can make a lot more money if we do uh, certi more certificate or uh, that kind of uh, that kind of things. Uh, and 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 I believe our number is correct. When I say twenty five million, it's just, I just take by uh, I I consider the thing as a hundred percent. Uh, the difference, five thousand times, five, 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 five thousand FTS times five thousand dollars per FTS. But in reality, you're seeing our SCIF calculation. And the three years average is coming from the Department of Research. VC Brown will give us those three years average for the head counts and FTS. And I make sure that the FTS tie with our two three twenty attendance report and I go back and take the real numbers. And if you look at our BOM model, you will see that the FTS is exactly the same for those years when we're taking the average. So I'm still saying again that the SCIF is correct. We're struggling with the three point eight million. If we do not get any, any um, collar, so that will increase uh, every year because we have to, I have to let you know that every year we're adding on the purges and health and seven column, around two point five million to three million is every year increased on the on the expenditure side. is every year increased on the, on the expenditure side.
Um, trustee Bonilla, president Bonilla, may I ask a clarifying question?
Please do.
So we talked about, we're talking about several different things. The certificates and degrees, providing more of those is a separate issue uh, than the cost of living and how SCIF impacts our area. Um, the, the Alameda County area, North and South Bay, because there's a huge wealth disparity in this area. And so when we're talking about the support for students, we're trying to bridge a gap and that what we're, what we're still running into, which I'm still trying to get understanding on is that, uh, and, and granted that's an approximation of the twenty-five million, but it's really not that far off because, uh, we see the number, we could tell the number of students in a certain economic uh, level because of the Pell Grant recipients that we have. It's also included in the budget. So my question is, what is the real impact when the whole harmless is no longer provided? And we have such a dramatic reduction in our enrollment? When the SCIF is counting, uh, is, is providing funds for students that is not, um, addressing the high cost of living for the Bay Area. That's part of what we're seeing in our numbers dwindling and in the gentrification. It's all part of the same social impact. And what I'm asking is that twenty-five million that you mentioned, I still don't see how that is not a number that throws us off significantly.
So, um, we have, uh, the states have extended the hold harmless until twenty twenty-three. So we have two more years. So I'm gonna look, uh, I'm gonna look, uh, at the income disparity and we have to do some research. And I will get back to you on that. But at this point of time, our, uh, our hold harmless is only three point eight million. And if today there was, uh, we stop the SCIF, then that would be our deficit, the three point eight million. But the state was extended because of COVID nineteen, two more years. But we're gonna look on those, uh, I'm gonna do my research on the, uh, my research on the, on the disparity. And we'll get back to you on that.
Uh, trustee, excuse me, president Bonilla. So I, I will, yeah, I will direct those, those questions. I mean, I know, and, and thank you so much, trustee Brown and, um, and Adil for answering the questions. But again, that information will go through the chancellor in terms of what, um, what, what comes back to the board and how it comes back to the board. But thank you so much. Uh, looks like I have trustee Reese in the queue.
Just, um, mine's not really a, a question, but more of a comment and a seed for thought, I think, in terms of we, you have the five-year projections here. Um, and as I, this was one of the questions I had put forth, but I just want us to kind of really think about that when we bring the budget back for the second read and really kind of for our overall planning. And as we look at the budget for the five-year rollout, um, we're, you know, our revenue is for the most part the same. Um, this is of course with the hold harmless and we're assuming that it's going to be the same with a little variance. Um, the expenses, our expenditures start to increase beyond our revenue. And we have to really think about that because there are so many uncertainties in our current economic landscape. And even though we've got deferrals, there are many different impacts that we know not yet of, even from nineteen, twenty, and then going forward. And it's not just a matter of cash flow because we, there's just a lot of uncertainty. So again, not for response, but I just want us to be able to think about this in terms of these five-year projections, we need to, and with our declining enrollment, we need to figure out how we move forward with intentionality in such a manner that expenditures don't look the same or even larger than where we are today. Because we all pretty much know that it's not a U in terms of our economic situation right now, but it's more of an L, which means that things are probably still going to be quite bad. Um, so I would, you know, again, when this comes back to us, I would really, really urge us to kind of think about how this comes back to us, uh, because there's, there's a, there's going to be planning that we need to maybe really think about because if we're looking already down the road with structural deficits for twenty-one, uh, twenty-two and twenty-three, that's not a good direction forward. And this is all assuming that all of our funding mechanisms still remain at a status quo. But again, not for response, just for seed for thought.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee.
Other trustees? Um, seeing that there are no more questions, I want to thank Adil Ahmed and for this presentation. Thank you, chancellor.
Thank you, president Bonilla. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for that. All right. We are on to item three point three, three point four, three point five and three point six. And I wonder, we have Dr. Jim Riggs with us. Yes, I see him there. Welcome to our meeting. Thank you for being here. So, uh, what I've asked Dr. Riggs to do is to give us a high-level overview of what these, um, November special reports are for each of the colleges, uh, rather than, because last time we had a board meeting, the presidents really uh, went into, uh, overall detail with a presentation about how they were working on their November special reports. And so today, um, I would like to ask Dr. Riggs to just give a overview of where we are, what the process was and how we're going to move forward. We're not gonna necessarily to talk about the ICERS until next time we convene. So just for this today, looking at what, what we've got. And, um, and then I would like to ask the trustees if they would be kind enough to forward uh, any questions or comments that they have on the ice, excuse me, on the November special reports to me by email by this Friday so that, uh, the, the reports can be, uh, begin to move into their final stages. And I mentioned, uh, Dr. Riggs, maybe before you were on the call, I don't know, maybe you were here, that we did confirm with Dr. Droger that there will be a special visit in response to the November special reports. And we're waiting to hear when that date might be. But we do know that it'll be virtual, at least at this point. So I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to you, Dr. Riggs, and you can let us know how we're doing.
Okay. Well, well, thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity. My, my comments are gonna be very, very brief. Uh, and just let you know, over the, the past several weeks, I've had the opportunity to work with the four presidents and chancellor Walter in preparing these, the special, um, uh, report for the commission. And in my assessment, each of the colleges in the district, uh, services has stated clearly what has been done and what's in progress to address the eight areas of concern listed in the January a two thousand twenty letter, uh, from the commission. Uh, there was, there's also a robust, uh, response to the six specific areas related to fiscal issues, uh, in the, um, the reports. And so if you're looking for that response, we've, uh, we've all agreed to put it into an appendix uh, to try to cover all the areas that were listed in that particular, um, uh, letter. But I could go through, I know you had very, uh, very thorough presentations at your last uh, meeting, uh, with, by the presidents and the chancellor. I won't go through all of these. I, uh, the role that, that I played and, uh, working with the, with the presidents and Dr. Walter uh, was really to help them tell the story of the good things that they've done uh, and are put into place and things that they're working on. And I think that's, um, an important segue after the very sobering budget report. Uh, because they, they, if you look at those reports, it's no longer corrective intent. It's corrective action in several areas in enrollment management, uh, program, uh, course alignments and, um, uh, and the like. And then also working with the SCIF, uh, very, very creative, um, uh, kinds of things to help, uh, address, uh, increasing financial aid. And then also, uh, degree and certificate completion in other areas that are measured uh, in, uh, that completion or success area in, in the, the SCIF. Uh, also, as, as you look at the, the, uh, overall focus of the, uh, of commission's letter, so much of it had to do with, um, uh, fiscal issues. And, uh, again, uh, not going into a great depth on this. And it really does show though, within the, the reports, the, the true partnership. And you have to have a partnership in a multi-college district between your colleges and your district service to be successful in managing such a complex, um, tight, tight kind of budget. So I, I do commend the work that's being done there in concert between, uh, Dr. Walter and the college presidents, specifically looking at how the colleges can continue to strengthen their administrative services, uh, divisions and some cases getting vice presidents to help over, oversee that. Uh, there's a lot of work in progress. Um, when these, this commission, when this report gets, these reports get filed in, uh, first of November, it all won't be in, in, in place, but there's a lot of things going on there that, uh, I'm confident that the commission will, uh, be very, very pleased with. Uh, again, it was the, the, the reports tell what I think is a very hopeful and a successful uh, story. And my role is to help, uh, advise the presidents through that process of telling, telling the story. So with that, I'll go ahead and stop. And if you have any questions for me on, on what, what's gone on the last, um, number of weeks, uh, I'd be happy to try to answer those. I know that you're looking at each one of the, the reports at this time. As you look at the reports, you might find, uh, a few places that, uh, will still need to be, um, cleaned up a little bit. Uh, we're, we will be continuing to comb through them, uh, for presentation and, and the like, but the substance certainly is there. Uh, thank you.
Thank you so much, um, Dr. Riggs. And thank you, chancellor. We'll go ahead and open up for, um, comments, questions, um, from the trustees. Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. Um, it's really clear, there's a lot of work that's, uh, gone into these accreditation responses. And I appreciate, uh, the, the depth and extent of that work. I'm looking then at the common response that's at the tail end. And in particular, um, I'm looking for the response to item eight, which was the executive level turnover. And is that just not there yet? Is, am I missing something? Can I not find it? I have some thoughts that I wanted to share, but I, I wasn't able to. Maybe I just couldn't find it and, and, uh, I had two thoughts and I'll just share them. One is that I think we need an analysis of why we have executive level turnover. I think there are different theories out there, but I don't know that any of these theories has been validated. One of the theories that we've often heard is that we just need to pay administrators more money. That might be a correct theory. I don't know. I, I kind of tend to think that's not a correct theory because this is a problem that's statewide. And my sense is that people don't come to Peralta for the big bucks. And they're not gonna stick around for the big bucks. So I think that theory isn't correct. But here's the thing, I don't, in my experience, I don't see us doing any serious uh, exit interviews with, with key administrators who leave. Um, so, you know, in the last year, we've had four college presidents leave and a couple of vice chancellors and then a chancellor. And to my knowledge, we haven't really, I'm not, I have not seen any findings from, or even a summary of an exit interview that's really gone into detail. And I think if we don't really talk with people, we're not gonna know. And talking with people doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna get the answer, right? I mean, people have their professional reputations and so sometimes they just won't say, they won't speak frankly on the record. But there needs to be some way of doing that. And I really profound, I mean that in the most sincere, in the most sincere way. I think people who are administrators in this district work really hard. It's mostly a pretty thankless job. Um, and so when they leave, something went wrong, probably. I mean, in some cases, they leave for like really good reasons for their personal lives, but that, that doesn't seem like that's mostly what happens. So that's one, uh, that's one thought. And I want to just put out a, a thought about a response. Because it seems to me that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I, I've heard trustee Withrow talk about this a number of times too. So, so Bill, if I'm missing this, you, you help me. But, um, I think this is a statewide problem. I've heard the number three years, you know, in general administrators throughout the state that come into a position, boom, they're gone in three years. And a lot of times they're, they leave the institution, they go somewhere else. In some institutions, there's upward mobility and you, and you see that. But if in fact that's the case, then it's not just Peralta, it's a statewide problem. And I think then what we need to be thinking about is, well, all right, if that's just the state of the world, that we're gonna have a lot of administrative churn, I think institutionally, we need to plan for that then and figure out, well, how do we embed within the institutions, the institutional memory, the knowledge, the lessons of administrative actions, policies, plans, procedures, and then the outcomes. Sometimes what you see happen is an administrator has a great idea. They start developing it and they leave, boom, and it's gone. And we saw that in general services where we were doing some EI, environmental remediation work. We lost some project planners, we lost some directors, et cetera, and then boom, gone. Okay. So how do we make sure we have better continuity? And I think that one of the ways, it's my pet project, one of the ways that we can ensure better institutional continuity is by making sure that our shared governance process embeds that because we have staff members and faculty members who are here for a long time. And we have, you know, we have directors and we have classified managers who are here a long time. And a lot of times they know so much more than anybody else about what's going on in the district. If we don't tap into that and build on that strength, then I think that we're missing something. And so I'm just gonna put this out as a suggestion for you to, to consider. I think you all are very capable. Um, and you know where the strength in your institutions are, especially those of you who are new. You got here and you knew immediately where there was strength and where there were deficits. And then you had to do some exploring, but you could not be successful if you did not rely on that strength. So can we, as part of our institutional planning for this churn, which is not just unique to Peralta, can we rely on that strength? And can we make policy and procedure based on data? And the data really needs to be built on people's. And the data really needs to be built on people's actual experience of why they come, why they stay, why they go. Can we do that research? I think that's an interesting project for institutional planning and research. But I don't direct anybody. So that was just my thought, and I'll leave that in your capable hands. Thank you.
Dr. Walker, would you like me to respond?
I would like to say just one thing, and then yes. Thank you so much for that, trustee Ewan. One of the suggestions that Dr. Riggs made to me regarding that item, we, we know that it's a deficiency, is to put together a number of action plans and goals to address exit interviews, to address even the notion of, I shouldn't say even, I mean, what I mean is to talk about how perhaps our district may unknowingly have a way of interacting that doesn't take into consideration certain diversity characteristics for administrators. And so I do believe that one of our stated actions is to engage with, looking at institutionalizing exit interviews, but also looking at how we can incentivize health, in a healthy way, for administrators to remain with the district because it is really critical for long-term stability. So just to let you know that, that, that has been suggested. And I, with that, I will, I do ask Dr. Riggs to further elaborate on how we can do it because it's really, really critical.
Well, first of all, just responding to the, to the reports in that particular area. I did ask and work with the college presidents to look at the things they are doing to support their administrators. Now, you know, where do you draw the line? What's executive, what isn't? Well, you know, you're growing folks. So if you perhaps not define your, your deans, but oftentimes there's a one who persists into your vice presidencies and sometimes into your, your presidencies. So, but to look at the bigger issue, trustee Gonzalez, you raised some very, very important points. One of the things we do with our, our firm is probably about half our work is in executive searches. And so we see it up and down the state of the, this migration that occurs. And what very few colleges are doing is really having that open discussion about retention and then also succession planning, which you raised very eloquently. About succession planning is about that institutional knowledge. I think Peralta has that, that opportunity to look at retention strategies. And then also, quite frankly, looking at some of the issues that we don't like to talk about. You know, how can we support our administrators? You know, the, the model of administration is an industrial model, oftentimes at community colleges, and is focused on a, a set of, of values that are limited to certain groups of people, you know, to be very candid. So I think that's a place to start. How can you build to make it an environment that is embracing and supportive of all your administrators? Could you recruit, for example, administrators of color? Yes. Could you retain them? That may be a different question. And the, the, the answer is in what you suggest.
Jim, I don't think anybody's hearing you right now.
There's a, there's a lag, unfortunately, Dr. Riggs.
Dr. Riggs?
You might want to, you might want to turn off your.
I could try to log back on.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go. We can hear you.
I'll turn off my, okay, turn off my video, that would help. I'm sorry, I live in the mountains, so we're talking about a digital divide, look at the rural areas. But anyway, you know, I didn't mean to get on my high horse there, but that's a very important area that I focused on as a faculty member teaching in a doctoral program and then also as a, as a leader too. There's, in different areas, you have multiple challenges. In my case, in rural communities, trying to retain administrators in those particular areas. So, thank you.
Thank you, President Binia. May I just follow up?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So I, I think you've raised some really critical questions. And I think maybe part of our response to this issue is to then also look at how we can build on the strength of our community. We, we live in probably one of the most racially and demographically diverse regions in the world. How do we build on that? How do we really capitalize on, on, on creating an administrative workforce that really reflects that diversity? And then if we could figure out how to model out this, you know, building on that strength within our administrative structures, that would be a real gift to humanity. I think maybe part of what we need to though, do is start on the front end and look and do the analysis. What does our administrative structure look like? How diverse is it? Where are we recruiting people from? When we are successful in diversifying our administrative structure? How did we do that? And when we retain people, how are we doing that? So I, I think, Jim, you, you're, you're on to something that we've got some real opportunities in that area. I see some of those plans addressing, starting to address that, that question. But really, I, I think there's room for growth here. So, and I'm, I'm excited about it. I think there's some real possibilities for figuring out new models that, that really can be replicated elsewhere. But we, we certainly have some work to do. Thank you very much for all your work, everybody on, on these accreditation reports.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez. Let's see, do we have others in the queue? Trustee Reese.
Sure. Again, I just have comments and then all of my other questions and feedback I'm, I'm sending. Quite a bit. But first, thank you. Thank you to all of the individuals that have really worked hard from all of the different ranks and the presidents and everyone that has really worked hard in, in getting this forward and getting these reports to where they are. And you're simultaneously working on the ISER, so that's huge, huge, huge. So thank you for all that you've done. There are just a few things that come to mind just as you continue to write even more so and collect information and put it into the special report. So as I think about the framework, there are certain things that I would just suggest that you keep in mind, and that is succinctness, really getting to the point, and brevity. Just really just tying, making it tight. And then something that president Bunia and I have been talking about a lot, an overproduction of evidence. So tightness in the text and an overproduction of the evidence. And, and as I was looking through the reports, particularly the district section, there are three overarching things that I would be looking for. And those three overarching things are, number one, how have we dealt with a structural deficit? And the evidence and the response points to the FICMAT self-analysis as well as the five-year plan. And again, the FICMAT report, we don't know if that's going to be done by November 1st. So we need to be careful about whether we're going to include that, that self-analysis, that is. And then the, the five-year plan, that five-year plan came to us with particular comments. That special report lacks organizational structure clarity and specificity of content. There was corrective intent, but no evidence. So again, we want to kind of be careful about the evidence that we're using. And I would say also, as it relates to the structural deficit, and I know that this is a draft, so it's not there yet. But we, we do need to have a table of our three- or five-year plan in there. Because as we all know, these, the agencies, particularly the Commission, but all of the agencies are looking not just for today, but how our budget today rolls out into the next three or four years. So that's really important. The second is, the second thing I'd be looking for is the unaddressed audit findings. And there, again, in terms of specificity, if we go to our audit reports and find out what those findings were, we put them back into the report and say, these are the findings, this is what we've done, this is the evidence. And then maybe even, and this is, you know, you decide, Dr. Riggs or, or the teams, whether we even put the other audit findings there, if we've worked on them. Again, this kind of over, overproduction of evidence with specificity. And then the, you know, the third thing that I'd be looking for would be the, the reconciliation and the control issues. And we keep on talking about Oracle and technology and our evidence is the trustee meeting where we, where we ratify the contract. That's not evidence. And, and then the other question would be, how are we doing anything in the interim before that implementation to help with those control issues? And again, those are just kind of the preliminary comments that I have. And everything else I would just put in, in written word. But I think it's, it's really important for us to kind of really be succinct and to the point and the overproduction of evidence, but really talking only to the points that they have laid out. But thank you for all the work thus far, truly.
Thank you, trustee Reese. Any other comments, trustee? So I also want to thank, if there are no other comments, I'll just take a quick opportunity to thank all of the college presidents and your teams for this diligent work. I know that it is all-consuming and that we really, really appreciate all the effort that's going into, into producing such an incredible amount of information. And so we look forward to providing through the chancellor more written comments, as it may just be too much to share, through an interactive dialogue process. As if you all need to kind of hear more from us. You have your teams, you have amazing information. And I know it's going through a collaborative process, as we heard earlier from president Bessa Kopp, who talked about the process that the document is going through. So completely appreciate that, and thank you so much. So chancellor, I believe we can move on to your next item under informational.
Yes, thank you. So we are on the first reading of proposed board policies. And we have, this is here for the trustees' information to read and review. These are being really responding to changes in the Title IX policies as well as prohibition of harassment. So there, there really is, this is really an informational item for the trustees to review. And we will bring them back for a future meeting for adoption. So if there are any comments or questions about the policies, I would like to request an email with the questions or the comments on them from the trustees.
Thank you for that, chancellor. Thank you. I don't know if any of the trustees have any comments at the moment. And if not, as the chancellor requested, we can follow up in writing as well. Thank you for that.
Our next item are the financial statements and clash, cash flow summaries that have been produced for the month end of September 30th. And what you have before you are year-to-date financials and a cash flow report showing where we are. And this is again for your information. Given the point in time and the year and the cash that we have, it, it really shows that we have a projected ending cash balance of 12,826,000 and that we are meeting our expenses and that our revenue is 41 million, which is about 18% of the general fund revenues received. And our expenses are roughly with a budget 26,549,000, or 17, 17% of our expenses and, and encumbrances. Again, this is a report that's presented for information. And one of the goals that the board wanted was to have regular reports of our financial condition.
Thank you for that. And do we have any comments or questions from the trustees? See, non-chancellor, thank you for providing those cash flow summary, statements and summary. And that takes us to our next item, which is our consent calendar. So may I have a motion to approve on the consent calendar? And a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and take roll call.
Thank you, Madam President. Trustee Withrow?
Aye.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes, and 7.4 is action, right? Move to action?
That's correct.
All right, thanks.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Reese?
Yes.
And trustee Binia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and take our first action item, and that's item 7.4, which is consider approval of two agreements with Cambridge West LLC to improve district-wide impact on this gift. And we have approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, and we'll open for discussion.
My question for this, Dr. Walter? Sure, my, my question for this was, and my reason for taking off a consent is, could you just give us a context for this particular piece in terms of, or this contract in terms of its, what, just give us context.
I definitely can, and I really do appreciate the question. So the context of this kind of goes back to some of the dialogue we were having a little bit earlier tonight around, you know, ensuring that we are aligning all of our internal processes with the SCIF on the one hand, and then ensuring that we have a level of data integrity on the other hand. And we have had presentations by Cambridge West that they came, presented to as part of our webinar series on the budget and SCIF and how we can look at our data integrity. They've, they've made presentations with our presidents. Again, as we're trying to move in the direction of empowering the colleges and making sure that the data is, you know, significant for them as well as aligning the reporting that we provide to the state chancellor's office so that it becomes something that's robust and it's it's not in a, how do I say, a siloed approach. This is not to, you know, have any type of blame or any kind of implication for any one group. It's just to say that we need to really focus on how we're doing this as a district and as our colleges. And this organization specializes in this work. In fact, they were, they were some of the originators of the work that FICMAT is doing and are very skilled with the student-centered funding formula. So it is a process whereby the consultants will work with us. They'll work with our internal folks as well as our shared governance participatory governance groups to help move forward with reconsidering the budget allocation model, which has not moved forward for a number of reasons. But we need to move that forward to be in alignment with the SCIF and looking at ways that we can, you know, address the SCIF cliff. This particular organization's presentation to in in webinars and to the presidents and others is part of our evidentiary, you know, deck, if you will, in terms of letting ACCJC know what we're doing to address this. You know, we have, you know, reports and 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 actions we need to take as well with the state chancellor's office. And this will help us move forward in providing the kind of reporting that we would need to do in that vein as well. So I believe that working with Cambridge West and the individuals there to help our district will be a really thoughtful approach. It'll be a participatory governance approach. It'll be an integrated approach. And of course, nothing is perfect. But this is a beginning to start giving us that level of confidence that we have in our data integrity and working on our internal models for moving us forward with the SCIF. So that's basically the backdrop for these two proposals.
Thank you. And and I'm not sure if you know, but we can't actually look at the contract. They're password protected. Those contracts come across as password protected.
Oh, I can, they click completely open.
Am I the only one that's having that problem? But it says a document is password protected for both.
Are you talking about the two contracts that are on the board?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm I'm able to open them. I don't know if other trustees are.
I can open it.
That's weird. Okay. Thank you for that context. That's helpful. Am I the, I'm the only one? That's interesting.
That's unique as good sometimes.
Sometimes. Figure this out. Thank you.
Were there other, thank you, trustee Reese, and I'm so sorry that you're having technical difficulties opening. We'll make sure to make sure to send you those contracts via email. Any other questions from trustees? It looks like I have trustee Gonzalez, UN in the queue.
Thank you, Vice President Napolea Bella Reese. This is such an important question. You know, when when the SCIF was enacted, it was over the objection of virtually every constituent body except for the state chancellor's office. And I think it's an unproven theory of budgeting. We've had a lot of push from ACCJC, from many other kind of bodies to do, to to really do assessments of the impact of what we do in the community colleges on the real lives of of students. So, you know, student learning outcomes, program-level outcomes, institutional outcomes, et cetera. And so now we've got the SCIF, and one way of looking at the SCIF is, well, how do we maximize our dollars out of the SCIF? Are we checking off all the boxes and 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 hitting all the categories? And we could design programs that do that. I said this when we were first, you know, looking at at the SCIF. And it's like, yeah, you know, when you do pay for performance, it's easy to cheat. All you have to do is, like, you want higher levels of student success in a classroom? All I have to do is lower the bar and pass more students. Give them all A's. Don't drop them out, whatever it is, and I can get higher success. Okay. So that's one pretty stupid way of doing an analysis. And so I think that, you know, the question of how will we align is a really critical question. Chancellor, the thing that I that I heard that really just lit lit up my ears was when you said, this will be done with a shared governance process. So we will include actual students who represent students. If we ever get some student trustees, that that'd be nice. That would be helpful. But, you know, that that actual process of of the students themselves representing themselves, the faculty and staff representing what they do, and then aligning and saying, okay, well, what it, we could maximize our dollars here. But what's the impact of this thing on what we do as educators and how it impacts our communities and the students involved? If we don't take the opportunity to do that, then I think we are failing as an institution. We might maximize our dollars, but still fail. And I, and my worry at the state level is that that work is not being done in a very thoughtful way. Mostly because the state chancellor's office is in a pretty defended position where they don't want to look at things like Cal-Bright. They don't want to look and go, oh, yeah, that was a really bad idea. Mostly failed. We're wasting money. And instead, they just seem to be interested in defending the decisions that they've already made. Well, I think we have an opportunity to fill this, to fill out the picture. And if we and other institutions around the state are thoughtful on this, I think we can make a real contribution. We have an opportunity. Thank you.
Good. Thanks. Thank you for the questions, Indy.
And I have trustee Handy in queue.
I have a few questions for you. Who else is using an outside contractor to do this?
If you're, are you asking for like a list of their clients?
I'm asking for anybody who is paying an outside contractor to do work that should be done in-house.
No, there are several districts in the state that are working with Cambridge West on these issues.
Are they as broke as we are? Because when I'm looking at this, this is $70,000. We're just going to spend money to make sure that we're utilizing money. But this is actually something that would come, that falls under the job description of our finance department. And the data is being collected already internally. So when we talk about having limited funds and the challenges coming down the pipe, why are we contracting out? I am really shocked that the union, when I was elected, the last thing they wanted to hear was contracting out. But here I consistently see us looking at contracts for people to do work that I think is redundant because it's work which which falls under our own job descriptions. We have CBT doing studies. We have ACCJC. We have support services for any of these reportings that we're supposed to do that that has come. And and contrary to my colleague's opinion, you can bash the state chancellor's office all you want. We are accountable to them and they provide support services. So we will do what they ask. And I don't think antagonizing and belittling and and pretending that it doesn't matter benefits Peralta at all because they're watching us. So but my question is here, why do we need to go out and do this where this is something that we should be doing ourselves? We've got the data. We've got consultants. We've had them in here for the past year. To me, I think it's just redundant and that it's a contracting out of something that we really should be doing ourselves. And I don't, I'm just wondering, again, asking, how many other people are actually doing this? And why? And do they, are they better funded than we are? Do they have more discretionary cash? Because we don't have it. We're just, you know, we're, we're, we're here at the, at the bottom line. We just allocate $1.2 million for training or whatever stipends for our faculty members. At the same time, we are bleeding students by the minute, 17% down at the district, 22% down at Laney already, and that was already down, what, 6,000 students before COVID. So where are these funds going to come from? And again, why aren't we doing our own work? Because we do have assistance from the state. We've had, I mean, how many people have they sent in here to check? But they also offer assistance. So I don't really see how we can justify doing this, especially when it's not something we've done before. So if you could answer any of those questions for me, I would really be glad to hear that.
Thank you, trustee Handy. Chancellor?
Sure. Thank you for the question. So the funds are coming from the general fund. The budget code is there. We have the funds available to take care of this, this really important effort. Really, we have had several consultants in in the past before I was here. And the difference, I think, that you would find in this effort is that we are, we have a certain number of really important deliverables that these these folks are going to be working with us on. And really, you know, one of the things that we have to be mindful of in our work is the fact that, you know, the capacity that the district has to do certain types of efforts. And this is one of those that requires some, you know, integration. If you look at our participatory governance framework, no one person has the ability to hold a thread, if you would, from every participatory governance group throughout the district to make, come forward through to the district-level groups to make a recommendation through to PBC, then PGC, and so forth. So it's a, it's a daunting and overwhelming kind of work that needs to be done. And so I suppose if if we wanted to think about hiring someone, we could create a position description for that person, bring it through the shared governance processes, and then bring it forward for the board to approve, and then go through the recruitment process and so on. And I think that that would probably be completed well past the time that I would envision us, you know, getting our arms around revising and implementing the kind of data integrity and integration that we really need in our district to move us forward. So, you know, I recognize your questions. I appreciate them. I can't speak to what happened in the past. I do know that this is really important work for our district and for our colleges and for our students. And so I'm I'm really enthused by the work that Cambridge West can do for us and and move us forward. Now, I know that this organization has worked with, for example, Chabot-Las Pecitas Community College District. I'm not really privy to every aspect of the scope of work that they did for them. They've also worked with, if you look on their website, they have a number of different colleges up and down the state that they've worked with on different projects. So, you know, I I understand where your your concerns are. But I really do think this is a really positive direction for the district and getting the data integrity and having our arms around, you know, controlling this information is critical, especially to, I'll say, as it relates to our audit findings and what we need to do there. So I hope that provides a little bit of a context to your question.
Thank you, Chancellor. Trustee Handy, do you have a follow-up? I see your hand still.
I do. It actually, it doesn't because the the budget allocation model, that comes under our finance department. And I mean, you, it would be different when you say we don't have the resources. Our people have doctors. They're educators. That's what their jobs are. The data is already being collected. So if you want to move this aside and someone say someone else is to do this, but this is redundant. This is part of the job description for the finance department and others in the data is collected. So I'm just going to go on record and say, I don't want to see this new trend of of double-dipping, basically paying other people to do jobs that our employees are already there to do. This information is already there. And we will do it correctly, or they will let us know that we're not doing it correctly. But this is just kind of passing the bucks on the finance department, whose job it is to know. And if they don't know, then that's a problem for me because that's part of their job. It's absolutely part of a part of their job. And and also, we, as I said, we've had consultants before, and they've moved us to where we are right now. So I just don't see paying money to see how we save money, especially when we're already paying money in salaries for people whose department that comes after. You can say whatever you want, but it comes, still amounts to contracting out for jobs that are supposed to be done in-house with the capabilities already in-house. And if they're not, then we need to be looking at the positions again and the backgrounds and the qualifications of the people who are sitting in those positions.
Thank you, trustee Handy. I have trustee Gonzalez, UN in the queue, and then trustee Brown. Can you unmute trustee Gonzalez?
Sorry about that. I, you know, I think that the tone aside, the one area that I might agree with trustee Handy on this is that a lot of times when we do contract out, we we pay people to develop expertise that then goes away. And and to the extent that we can avoid that, that's that's a useful thing. It sounds like this is really time-sensitive. We got a really good enrollment management report last week or two weeks ago talking about where we've done a good job of kind of hitting some SCIF numbers, which is really good. I think what we haven't done is done the impact then and what is that doing with the program? And I think to the extent that consultants can help train us in-house to be able to figure out, well, what, what, how would we then institutionalize the data collection and so forth? It may be that we need to create some reassign time for, you know, people on the campuses to do this work on an ongoing basis, if we're going to do it thoughtfully. I I don't see a lot of people standing around just twiddling their thumbs at Peralta. So I don't know where else, you know, what other spare body in finance is going to do this, or, you know, somebody on the campuses. But I think to the extent that our consultants really do help us develop our internal capacity for self-analysis and transfer that knowledge and help us build build that in, I would completely agree with trustee Handy that that's a preferable route in the long run. So, you know, more power to us if we can do it ourselves when we, when we have the capacity to do that. Thank you. I'm I'm ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee. Trustee Brown?
I recall that CBT was looking at the budgeting model. I'm just kind of wondering about the scope of work for the consultants that we had several months ago. There was, there were two different contracts for CBT. And I thought that this was one of them. And we did hire some research, uh, we had directors of research at our campuses. So I'm wondering how this contract works with the, um, CBT, uh, studies that we had and the, um, the directors of research that we have at our campuses.
Thank you for that, um, Chancellor.
Um, thank you for the question. Yeah, the, um, the issue is that the directors of research are in a different, a completely different area. And what we're trying to do with this, what we're, what we're expecting to do with this engagement is to ensure that we have appropriate data integrity that reaches across the district and, uh, within the colleges. That again, addresses some of our audit findings and also helps us to align and utilize the student-centered funding formula. I don't know how else to answer that question. That is what this contract is to do. I know that, um, in many cases when people are looking for information, for example, uh, the, the queries come back in different, with different results depending on, you know, certain aspects. So it, it's not to say that, um, you know, um, this is from my, from my point of view, there are a number of capacity issues, like I said, that we have at the district. Some, some issues that are based in a siloed approach that we need to undo. Also, uh, looking at how we're going to, you know, present the plans and actions that are going to address some of our ACCJC, uh, evidence and, and directions. And so in terms of, uh, what CBT is doing, um, that is a contract that, that was before my time. My understanding of the current CBT initiative has to do with the district, uh, technology plan. So, uh, there, it's a separate discussion, uh, although, um, you know, some of the information that, you know, you might be referencing maybe being, you know, I, I'm not exactly sure, um, what the context is. But this particular scope of work is to help us integrate, deal with our, uh, internal audit findings, make sure our data is correct, make sure that we have a budget allocation model that is, you know, developed across the participatory governance structure as is outlined in the budget allocation model that's, was put together. I think, I'm, I'm not sure, but, um, I want to say 2010, but I'm not sure if that's the exact date. So, you know, I, I do feel that really having, uh, this organization work with us, we can do the institutionalizing that's needed. Uh, we can look at our, our structures and determine whether or not, uh, they're appropriate. We can, you know, integrate our data, we can make sure it's accurate. And, you know, we can really have a robust way of performing, which is really important for our district right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. I believe, uh, I have Trustee Weinstein in the queue.
Thank, thank you. I, I guess I'm looking at this in a fairly general way. I feel like the Chancellor is asking us for something that will be helpful. Obviously, we all have different opinions about it. But, um, since I came on the board, every year it seemed like we had consultants come in for accreditation report or anything that we had to hand in. I remember the first year, excuse me, when I came in, I forgot what the woman's name was, but she was helping us with accreditation. So I don't think it's very, um, do you remember who that was? I see you shaking your head, but.
Annette DeBrosio. I remember Karen, you're right.
Right, Annette DeBrosio, yeah. And I think that Annette helped, um, helped us in terms of getting what we needed in terms of the accreditation. And, um, I think the finances, we can say that it should be the, uh, office of finances that it's doing it, but I think we're also clearly hearing that in this kind of a situation, which is a fairly, a, a very important time, that if we need some extra help, that we should, we should hear what the Chancellor is saying. And, and I, I personally would support it. Now, that's not to say that I don't hear you, um, Trustee Handy, in terms of finances and the situation that we're in. But again, since I came on the board, we've always had problems with the audit, never followed through with it. We never fixed the things we needed to fix. If we can work with somebody who can help us do that for this time, I, I, I would support it. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we have no other comments, I believe the item has been, um, properly motioned with the second. And we will go ahead and take, okay, Trustee Handy?
I do have, I think that the problem is we don't build our skill base. We bring them in and they leave. And we still haven't really focused on developing the skill base that we need. We move people through, we pass them on, but we don't have the strong skill, skill base that we need to do it. So they'll come in and they'll go out and it's not going to change. And I think that's very important. Annette DeBrosio did come in and she did all of our accreditation reports because in the past, there was no consistency. From one college to another, the formats were different. She came in the night that we had our board meeting and announced that all of our colleges were off of watch. This board voted to not renew her contract. And you know exactly where that took us. Again, it goes back to not having the skill base. So lessons learned is that we need that training with our campuses as opposed to contracting it out, getting it done, that person leaves. And then we find ourselves right back into the situation where we were before. What we need is to absolutely make sure that we have the strongest skill base possible. And that's what I believe we had when we hired a Vice Chancellor for Finance prior. And then, um, everyone else that was, that was in there. So if you do what you've always done, you're going to get what you always got. And right now, what we're looking at is someone coming in and not having anyone internally that consistently move us through. Well, actually, I, I'm hearing that there are people internally who could do this job. It's not that their plates are already too done, this is part of their jobs. So I think that it's a dangerous precedence to follow if we're going to continue to rather than do what we should do and, and raise the bar here, bring somebody in for a moment, send them out, and then end up right back where we started before. Because if we don't have it done correctly and we don't have continuity, we'll be right back where we started.
I hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Weinstein and Trustee Handy. So Chancellor, um, thank you for providing that, um, overview for us. I think there is definitely consensus across the board that, um, institutionalizing information and, and as we are working with consultants, that there is a keen, keen eye and keen focus, um, on those skills being transferred internally. And there is an intentional effort, um, on skill set building and institutionalizing, um, practices, um, internally for us.
Noted. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We'll go ahead and, uh, continue with a roll call on this.
Thank you, President.
Item 7.4.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
No.
Trustee Brown?
I'm going to abstain. I need a little bit more information on this.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Reese?
Yes.
And Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you for that. We'll move to item 8.1, and this is Consider Approval of Return to Campus Planning Guide. May I have a motion to approve? Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Chancellor, would you like to, um, provide some context for this? Or, um, trustees may have some questions also, but some context would be nice.
Sure, thank you. This is a document that, um, the board, the trustees have seen in a earlier version. And it's being brought back to, um, the board for consideration. As one of the priorities, uh, important to the district and to the board as a whole, and of course to all of our students, faculty, staff, uh, as we're beginning to return to campus. I mentioned earlier, uh, in my report that the state chancellor's office, uh, and others are issuing guidelines that are going to, you know, eventually return us to, um, hopefully being in person. But some of these protocols are here, uh, before you to help you see the progress that we're making, uh, to, to allow students to return safely, uh, to campus and then, uh, to, to the district offices, um, for the faculty staff. And to also note that this is a, a, a living sort of document. It isn't meant to be, uh, this is the Return to, uh, Campus Protocol Guideline and forevermore will not change. It will change, we'll be bringing it back, uh, for you to consider as we go forward. Important to this process, as you heard earlier too, is if there's any changes, uh, in working conditions or what have you that are negotiable items, we, we do intend to connect with our collective bargaining, constituents and make sure that everything is, uh, moving forward in, in ways that are appropriate. Um, and this, uh, this, these protocols are also, um, anticipated to be moving through our shared governance processes so that everyone involved, uh, has an idea of, or some input to how things are, are moving forward. So, uh, it is here for you to hopefully, uh, review. Again, it, it brings in, uh, how we're going to deal with, uh, if there's an outbreak of, um, a, a confirmed case of COVID. It talks about the, the ways in which, uh, physical spaces, uh, need to be configured, tells about, uh, where people can go should they need medical care, uh, guidelines for, you know, quarantine. It references, uh, different places people can get training. And so it's a work that, uh, is used for, for information purposes. Also lays out each of the campuses and where their labs are. It talks about athletics and so forth. So, um, I'm happy to, uh, entertain questions or comments or what have you, or however the, the board would like to move forward with this.
Thank you for that, Chancellor, and I do have, uh, Trustee Brown in the queue.
Thank you, uh, President Bonilla. When we discussed the COVID-19 protocols a few weeks ago, was it, um, a month ago? We talked, I asked a question about contact tracing. And part of the reason I asked that is because of the impact of, um, COVID being, um, predominantly was, it's going to hit our employees who are not able to work from home most severely. And, uh, so we have populations that are more, uh, I guess, um, exposed than others. And I didn't see anything about that here. Um, I was just, I noticed that there was, there were certain protocols if there was a suspected exposure. But I'm wondering about, um, if there, if this is the first, uh, iteration, would there be a little bit more, um, direction for the employees and support for the employees that may be concerned about exposure to COVID or how to help prevent exposure at home? If they have been exposed here, uh, because we've had a few instances where there's been confusion, um, by, uh, employees who are, um, you know, who really just needed more support. And I'm, I'm just curious, is, if we plugged up some of those gaps?
Thank you, Trustee.
So, um, thank you for the question. Uh, I, I think that, um, the appropriate person to answer the second part of your question would be VC Whitaker, since interim VC Whitaker, because she's the, uh, Vice Chancellor over Human Resources. And to talk with you or to share in-depth about what might be available for employees. And then the, and, and perhaps, um, uh, Mr. Royal Roberts could speak to us about contact tracing. I believe that that is something that's outside the scope of what Peralta Community College District would be doing. But let me ask VC Whitaker if she could speak to, uh, the second part of the question. And, and if, if necessary, then ask Mr. Royal Roberts to answer the first part.
Thank you, Chancellor. Um, for any employee that notifies the district that they have contracted COVID, they are allowed an extra 10 days of sick leave. And that is in addition to any sick leave or vacation that they have on the books. The unions have also, well, one union, union in particular has requested that we make some changes to our catastrophic leave provision in the contract to allow, um, individuals throughout the district to donate some of their vacation time or some of their sick time to individuals that may run out of leave, um, once they contract COVID. In addition to that, some of our unions have requested, um, additional compensation for essential employees that have to work on campus. And so we are in the process of both the Chancellor and I, um, at looking at those proposals from the unions. And we will provide them a response. But first, there must be a fiscal analysis done on the proposals that were given. So I hope that answers the question as to what we are offering employees that do, um, contract COVID.
That, that does give me some idea. I, I appreciate that. And, uh, I was also one, I mean, some colleges are actually trying to help with contact tracing to try and alert people if there's a risk and to help employees protect their, um, their, their family or, or personal circles. It's not something that's mandated, it's something that's, that's, that's some are doing. So I was just wondering if we have any of that formally or informally, um, that, that might help with, um, managing the spread of the, um, virus.
Yes, so anytime, even whether it's a suspected case or a confirmed case, once someone notifies their supervisor and then HR is notified, we immediately, um, both, uh, myself and, um, Dr. Royal Roberts, we reach out to the employee and we get a list of every single employee that they have been in contact with on campus for the past 14 days. And then all of those individuals are contacted to ask which employees they've been in contact with and so on and so forth, so that we can do our own type of contract tracing. Then all of those employees are notified. We ask them if they have been experiencing any symptoms and even if their response is no, we let them know that someone that they may have been in contact with within the past 14 days has contracted COVID. And we let them know that they need to immediately reach out to their, um, medical physician.
That's it. That's exactly what I was hoping we were doing. That makes me feel a lot better so that people get a heads up and they could be aware if someone that they have been in contact with has been in contact with someone that has COVID or, yeah, or someone's been exposed. That way we could at least help with our knowledge to minimize the spread of the virus. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Uh, Royal Roberts, do you have a comment to follow up?
I was just going to say, um, both the Chancellor and Vice Chancellor Whitaker, um, basically covered it, covered it. I, I was just going to mention that e- even the best plan is, is only good as the implementation. So, um, you know, sometimes a plan can be the best, uh, you know, um, place matter or whatever. But we've actually. But we've actually had the opportunity to unfortunately put this plan into place at least in three instances already, so that we actually put it into play. And also, we've put our pods into play recently with the athletic department, where we had a near miss at Laney College where someone was possibly in touch with someone who did contract COVID, where they were able to pull an athletic pod out of the larger unit. And I think that that's the other important piece, is the compartmentalization of individuals, so that even if there is infected, a person that becomes infected, it won't be widespread. So other than that, I think that the chancellor and vice chancellor Whitaker have explained it.
That's great. Thank you for that. And then I have, it looks like so, follow up from trustee Handy and then trustee Gonzalez.
Actually, I don't think I've spoken on this before. But my question is this. I'm glad to hear that things are falling into place. I was a little disturbed some months ago when there were challenges around people who had COVID. And this is the way I see it playing out. When a employee is not certain that they have coverage or what to do step by step, they are afraid of losing that income and they continue to come to work, and they may not seek out care quickly enough. And that puts us at the risk of infecting the whole group of people that they work with, and that actually happened, I believe, at College of Alameda. But what I want to know now is, I searched our website for the protocols, because when people told me, I said, oh, don't worry about it. The employee protocols are posted, so you'll know exactly what is happening. So if they are posted, I don't think it is as intuitive as it needs to be. I think people need to have reassurances that we want them well. We don't want them to come into work, that there aren't going to be negative consequences for them because they contracted this, and that they should stay home, especially in my community, which has large families. Sometimes there may be three or four families living in the same household. Each adult is an essential worker going out into different areas. And if you just tell them, you know, if they get a fever, they're not going to want to check because there's a huge responsibility, a lot of people counting on them. I think that's why it's so important that we have, maybe Mark can help with this, but have a kind of like a public service or information that continues to go out to all of our employees and all of our workers, showing them exactly where to look for the protocols. And one of the things that I encountered last month was someone who contacted me because when they went to their direct supervisor, they gave him a cookie cutter response and said, you need to be back at work at this day, when the doctor was saying something very different. And I think that we need to support those supervisors by making sure that they know exactly what the protocols are and then where to, and if that person is still ill, what do they do then? Rather than directing people who are dependent, if they didn't need their income, they wouldn't be working for us. So we have to be on the positive side. I think we need to have information blasting everywhere. If you're feeling sick, and I'm just going to give you an example. Someone was, went to their job in San Francisco. Their boss, the temperature when they tested him was like one point above. So the doc, so the boss told him to go home and don't come back until they get a COVID test. Well, that person felt fine and thought it was okay. Well, I don't have to go to work. Let me go hang out at my best friend's house and did that for two nights. And then on Wednesday, came back with a COVID positive test. There were two pregnant women in the house. There were children. There were other people. We're not going to think that, you know, it's not like people are trying to do this intentionally. I just found out some people, a couple who have been extremely careful. Both of them have COVID now. I just think that we cannot stress enough that we do not want you to come in if you have a temperature, that you need to go and get checked, and where to go where you can actually get results. I've taken two COVID tests. One gave, took five weeks to respond, and one I never heard back from. And I wrote it on Facebook, and one of the directors of Roots, Noah Abuleta, said that this is a thing that's going on. Many of these COVID sites, I think Berkeley has some that give you like instant ones, kiosk you can go into. But many of these COVID sites, you have two things. It says testing here, but then you have companies doing a money grab for the test, and they're taking them to labs who don't have the capacity to do the testing quickly. So four, five weeks pass. You know, you want to assume that they didn't call you in three weeks, three days, that you're okay, because they would call you immediately. But I'm not going to make that assumption. So because this whole thing is very, very new, I just want us to have as much information as easy to find. And if somebody calls and says, what are the protocols for COVID for students? I want to be able to say it's going to be right there, and there'll be a student giving a video or something saying, if you don't feel well, do this, this, or that. And but especially with the employees who are essential workers who still have to come to our campuses. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Handy. Trustee Gonzalez?
Thank you. I think Linda just right and tail end sort of touched on the issue that I want to raise, and that's the issue about our students. So, you know, the document says, like, you know, we're not coming back full, you know, full-blown anytime soon. And I think anybody with a half a wit knows that. But I'm looking at the document, and I'm not quite feeling confident that we're really addressing the central problem, which is going to be the students. All of our employees have some access to some kind of health care, even the part-time workers you got, and it's bad, right? I mean, it should be way better. But I don't think we can assume anything about our students' access to health care. And so I think we need to re-envision this document from the perspective of that the vast majority of people who are on our campuses are students. And so how do we design a protocol around people who you have no ability to trace? You have no ability to assume they have access to testing, to health care, the issues that people have been raising about, like, yeah, but I got to go to work because I got a paycheck to. And so I, you know, it's like, well, that's even more so for them. And so I think we need to just re-envision this document. I was really glad to hear that, you know, this is a, Jennifer reminding us, it's a bargainable issue. Let's all, let's all hands on deck. And this again is the real value of the shared governance process is that you get everybody's perspective seriously on board here. I'll just say one other thing real briefly. You know, in this state and in this country, we've been talking about universal health care for decades, and it's always the argument is, oh, it's too expensive. And the last round in California of universal health care legislation, the argument was, this is too expensive. We can't afford to cover it. Well, yeah, and we really can't afford not to cover it. And so I think as we work with our lobbyists and our ledge delegation about the real needs of community college students and the community colleges, this has to be a priority. The public health infrastructure in this state isn't a luxury that we can't afford. It is a necessity that we must invest in if we're going to just even have the most basic functioning. Because I can't imagine going to work and interacting with students anytime soon where I would be exposing all of them to each other, never mind my risk. I mean, no, don't never mind my risk. My risk is important. But I wouldn't do that to a student. Ask them to come into a classroom where they're going to be exposed to each other? And I have no way of even modestly assuring them, yeah, this is safe. So I think that that public health infrastructure, we need to really reexamine that as a priority in our own legislative priorities and what we ask our ledge delegation and the governor to really advance. Thanks. And thanks for your work on this, but that student piece.
So if I might respond, and if I could engage the help from VC Whitaker and Royal Roberts, I'm having a hard time interim chief of staff. So I think that there are two pieces, or at least maybe two, maybe three pieces to the points that have been raised just now. One is that students are in a different consideration set and that this document is focusing on some of the areas that our employees are dealing with. And it will be presented widely available on the website. It's not there now because it hasn't been approved by the board. So perhaps, Royal Roberts, you could talk a little bit about the scope and where the students fall in this whole scheme. And if needed, then we'll have VC Whitaker or either one of you. Either way, however you all want to go about it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chancellor. And you're exactly right. This document, as you mentioned from the onset, is a living document. It's more of a foundational document so that we would have all of the information in one place to be able to maneuver, no matter what comes next. Just for instance, we've already moved as a county from the purple to the red to the orange, and that's already happened within the few weeks from us meeting. There is a separate document that does address some of the finer points around what to do if a student becomes sick. And that is covered with our agreement with the Roots Clinic and in consultation with Dr. Mia Kelly and also Dr. Mays from the Roots Clinic. So there are some more specific documents or procedures that pinpoint precisely what trustee Gonzalez-Wen was mentioning around what's in place for students. But as the chancellor just mentioned, this is a more comprehensive document designed to help us move back to campus on a large scale if we ever get to that. If, well, when we get to that point, however far in the future it may be.
Thank you, Royal, and thank you, Chancellor, for the question. I would just add that Royal is absolutely correct. There were a few separate documents that were created to address student needs, and that falls under student health care, which actually falls under Dr. Brown. And as Mr. Roberts mentioned, Dr. Kelly and Dr. Mays, who work under, Dr. Kelly works under Dr. Brown, they worked in collaboration with those documents. So VC Brown may have some additional information to add because that specifically falls under her area, the student protocols.
Thank you for that, VC Whitaker. I did see VC Brown on the call.
Please, VC Brown, if you have something to add.
There she is.
Just very quickly, I'll just tell you that we do have student health care for students, even though the majority of our classes are online. As you all know, because you've approved for the last two years our contract with Roots Community Clinic, they are the leading across the state community health services, very grassroots in East and West Oakland, and now these gone to San Jose, et cetera. And our students have, they pay the health fee, and they have full access to the Roots Clinic. If a student goes to the clinic and they test positive for COVID-19, then it is the responsibility of the clinic, and actually, any clinic in the county where someone is tested positive 19, then the clinic is responsible for contact tracing. Oftentimes, we may not know if the student is positive for COVID-19. They may or may not inform us of that. And so if they go to our clinic, then that way we receive information. And like Chief of Staff Roberts mentioned, Dr. Kelly in alignment with and collaboration with our supervising physician, Dr. Mays developed a step-by-step with a sign-off on the protocols to follow if the student reports either being COVID-19 positive or being near someone who's COVID-19 positive. And we were fortunately or unfortunately able to test that out a few times this summer to see that the protocols work in terms of informing deans, presidents, et cetera.
Thank you, VC Brown. I do see trustee Brown's hand up.
Yeah, just, yeah, thank you. This really brings us back full circle to the question that I asked at first regarding what we're doing for student health and how we're spending the block grant funds. This is exactly why I ask, because we still don't know exactly what we're doing for students and what, and how much of the 1.2 million or how much of the block grant, other than the 1.2 million, has been expended. That's the question I have because health and behavioral services, including telemedicine, is one of the categories that could be funded through the block grant. And that's why you just can't lump those things together in a budget and say, I'll give it to you later and not give it. I mean, I know that the board has to decide that they want the information, but we've been talking about that continuously. So it appears as though that's something that's worth conversation. But where is the manifestation of the concern in the expenditure of funds? That's the question I've been asking.
Thank you, trustee Brown. So we have, I believe this item has been motioned with a second. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes. Yes, thank you. So I think that we are ready for a roll call on this. I'm sorry, just a couple of more points on this. I noticed that in the document, or I heard the chancellor or someone refer to the safeperalta.edu website. So we're anticipating that this document would be made widely available on the website. Was that my understanding, Chancellor?
Yes.
Sometimes you all move in the squares. This is like Zoom needs to keep everybody in the same spot. Search around for everyone.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. So I'm sorry, Mark, so go ahead and continue with roll call, please.
Very good. Trustee Whitrock?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Brown?
Now, we're voting on a living document. What are we doing with this document? I'm not understanding why we're voting because it is...
Oh, so it was placed in action. But if we want more clarification about why we're voting on this document, Chancellor, would you, do you have more context for the item?
The context is, let me see, let me go back. My computer is a little... It's important for the board to adopt this document so that the board shows and that the district has evidence that it is working with the COVID-19 aspects, that we have a Return to Campus protocol, that we are in fact moving forward with those protocols, that we are adhering to specific guidelines. So it's a framework the district board of trustees needs to...
Okay, I got it. And so that's employee only or employees and students? Because this one is employee only.
This one is for employees.
And then is that with the contract, the contact tracing that our VC of... And then is that with the contract, the contact tracing that, that our VC of HR and our Chief of Staff articulated?
Correct.
Okay.
For employees.
So once, so I would say, yes, once that's incorporated, but it's not in there now. It's a, it's a de facto process, but not a de jour. It's not in the document.
I'll hand it back to you, President Bonilla.
Yeah. So with that, I, I think, I think that's important. I think there is, there are certain pieces. I know it's a living document. There are certain pieces that are missing for me as well, as in terms of the reference of Safe, the Safe Peralta website. The component that I think Trustee Brown just mentioned. So as a living document, and we adopt this, when updates are made to the document, how will we know? Will the document be recirculated? Will we be somehow notified when the document is experiencing changes?
I would answer that affirmatively because it's one of the board priorities of the COVID-19. And, and the, the, the idea is we're in a situation where things are changing rapidly. And so the board would be informed. I, I would say that we could look at the board priorities and, and see what the reporting frequency would be. And if, if that can tie in to put a loop around it or to make it, you know, close the loop, if you will, that would be a really good.
Thank you for that, Chancellor. Yeah, no, thank you for that. And just, I think FYI, we did hear Dr. Benjamin say earlier that she's coming back to the executive leadership team. This is something that would, that would be discussed with the leadership team. So thank you for that. And thank you, Trustee Brown, because I think it's important that we know when these updates occur and how they come back to the board and notice to the board. So we'll, we'll continue with the roll call.
Just, just to clarify, oh, sorry.
You're gonna ask me what I did, what I said.
Yes, exactly.
So there's an informal process that was articulated that gave me comfort that's not in the document. So I'm going to have to to give a contingency vote with the understanding that the informal process of contact tracing articulated by the VC of HR and the Chief of Staff are added to this document because there is a level of effort that's being put forth that makes the plan much more complete that we don't see reflected in the plan. And so if we were to adopt it now, it would not reflect the, the Peralta's true effort to address this issue, which I think would do us a disservice. So I will say with the addition of that information, I would vote yes. But in the current.
Trustee Brown, can we? No, go ahead.
In the current form, it is missing a true reflection of Peralta's effort.
Trustee Brown, can we take that as a friendly amendment to, to the, the motion that was made?
Sure, sure.
Would you like to offer that?
I, that's, thank you for helping me with that. I am trying to figure out how to articulate this. Yes, let's do that.
Let's do that. And so who was the motion maker?
The maker of the motion accepts it.
And it's accepted. And our second on this item?
Weinstein.
Yes. Trustee Weinstein?
Second.
You were the second on the, okay. Thank you for that. And want to make sure that Mr. Mark Johnson has that friendly amendment.
I do? Do I need to go back?
Word for word. No, you don't need to go back. It's also, it's also recorded. So if there's any question, we can always go back to the recording. Thank you both for that. Thank you, Trustee Brown and Weinstein and Trustee Withrow. Now we can go ahead and finish with the roll call, though. But we'll start from the beginning.
Start, thank you.
All over.
Thank you very much. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Handy?
Yes, and can you mute whoever that is that has that background noise, please?
I've just been waiting to vote. That was it. Sorry.
Thank you. Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez-Wen?
It's the challenge of being in a meeting with family in the background. Yes. And I would also then make the request that we come back relatively soon with the student components of plan, which obviously we've got some documents and it would be great to see those and, and include those as our formal, as in part of our, as part of our formal planning process. But provisionally, this sound, this is a nice step. Good. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reese?
Yes.
And Trustee Bonilla?
Yeah.
Thank you. 8.1 as amended passes.
Thank you so much. We'll move to item 8.2, Consider Approval of Classified Personnel Items. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved and they need a second.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion?
I'm sad.
None. I'm sorry, what was that?
Sadness, expression of sadness.
Oh.
What number are we?
The one with Brenda's resignation.
8.2, 8.2.
Yeah.
Oh, God, yes.
Not that we don't love you, Mark.
Nobody misses Brenda more than I do.
I was gonna say, Mark, everyone who's crying for Brenda right now.
I know. We, we will do something, something a bit more formal for Brenda very soon. And so let's go ahead and take a roll call.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
With great sadness, yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Wen?
Reluctantly, yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes, with sadness.
Trustee Reese?
Yes, also with sadness, but we can hear much luck.
And President Bonilla?
Yes, with a big bow of sadness wrapped around it.
Thank you very much. 8.2 is passed.
Thank you. 8.3, Consider Approval of Management Personnel. Motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. And if there are no questions, we'll go ahead and take roll call.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Wen?
Yes, and this is another opportunity to do an exit interview. Thank you.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Reese?
Yes.
And Trustee Bonilla?
Yeah.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. We're moving on to item 8.4, which is Consider Approval of a New Classified Management Position, Chief Technology and Information System Officer. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
And a second. Do we have a second? No second, no discussion.
Could we have just brief background explanation from administration on this?
My hand is raised, and my hand is raised.
I, I know your hands raised. My issue is, is that unless there's a second, we typically cannot engage because there's no item to discuss.
I'll second.
If we don't have a second. We have a second. Thank you. Thank you. So I have Trustee Handy in the queue, and there's going to be more questions about this. So Trustee Handy?
Actually, I'm going to say, could you answer Trustee Gonzalez-Wen's question? Where is this coming from? Why CTO? As opposed to see, I, what is the thinking behind this? It would have been nice to, is this part of the recommendation from CBT or any of the others that we had before? I don't remember seeing anything saying that we should have a, that we shouldn't have a CIO, a CIO and just a CTO. So can you just bring me up to speed on this?
Sure, we can have the Chancellor shut the context for this.
Okay, thank you. Yes, this position is a recommendation by CBT and FICMAT for the organizational structure. And to, you know, help us move forward with supporting our district in terms of technology leadership. So the position is put here for your consideration as a new position. And to get any kind of feedback that you would have on it. I believe that Vice Chancellor Whitaker could also speak to some of the nuances of the position. And, and if there's any need for that, we can, we can certainly do that.
Thank you, Trustee Handy.
Just to end on that, what, what is the timeline for advertising for this?
Well, I think it would be assuming that the position was approved by the board, say, today, then we would need to go through the motion of hosting and recruiting and interviewing, the whole nine yards. So it would be, it wouldn't be, you know, my expectation would be that it's okay October 15th, November 15th, December holidays, maybe January.
So we're going to cast a nationwide search for this?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Okay, great, because this, this is a huge position. I know that we looked at before we realized that we possibly did not need the Vice Chancellor position, but we we've had a technical architect before. We had Chief, we had a, a CIO, and then we had a technical architect, but the technical architect could not function without the knowledge of a CIO. So now that we're going to collapse that into two positions, please don't grab the old job description. Because it's going to have, you're going to have to combine the, the needed technical skills of both of those positions. Be, and then if, if our Oracle contract is, has been done exactly what it was supposed to do with the deliverables and the timelines, you're going to need this person to guide it. We cannot let the person who was selling us this guide us in the implementation. That's a joke. It's just a big, it is a standard ripoff in the industry. So I'm glad that we will be moving in that direction. We needed to start that some time ago. But it really does need to be, to be a combination of those two since we're utilizing an outside contractor to do the other work. Because a tech, a technical, a technical architect is not, it's not, it's also not like the managing of the employees and all of that. It's just a very different thing. That's, that's the technical person that almost doesn't interact with people. They're on the other side with the inner workings of the technology. So anyway.
Thank you, Trustee Handy. Any other questions on this? Trustee Gonzalez?
Could you help us understand two things here? One, this is a classified management position as opposed to an admin position. Where does it fit within the organizational structure of the org chart? And is this a replacement for an existing position, or is this an addition to an existing position that is a management position within IT? We used to have Min Lam. Min's gone. I'm not exactly sure who's doing that job, who's overseeing IT right now. How, how does all this fit together? Especially within the context of trying to keep a lean and mean supervisory structure?
So I'll answer some of that question, and then I'll ask VC Whitaker to support. So the position is going to report as part of the Chancellor's Cabinet. And it is a new position. The existing oversight of information technology right now is being done by our Director of Information Technology Services, which is Antoine Meheulier. I speak some French, but I, I'm not sure I pronounce his name correctly. But that's where the overall engine of information technology is residing right now. VC Whitaker, do you have anything else to add?
Thank you, Chancellor. I think you pretty much summed it up. The position of Vice Chancellor of IT was eliminated. And so to replace that position, it was the recommendation to institute a brand-new position of CTO. This particular job description has actually been in the works for a while. Former Chancellor White began working on it just prior to her departure. Former Chancellor Stan Backstrout picked it up. And she worked alongside Chief of Staff Delilah Warden to firm up the job description. And now interim Chancellor Walker has formalized the job description and is moving it forward. As far as the organizational structure, the Chancellor is right. This position is a step down from a Vice Chancellor position. As far as the salary range is concerned, it is at the salary range just below the Vice Chancellor. But yes, it is a new position, and we are bringing it here tonight because this particular position has never existed in the district before. So it was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We did. We had, we had a CTO, Emerson Watley.
When we pulled the previous job codes and descriptions, there were, there were jobs that had all different iterations of titles. But we could not find in our system the specific title of CTO. And so that's why the two previous Chancellors went ahead and formulated a new job description. But Trustee Handy, you're absolutely correct. We've had several people hired at the district, but their titles were iterations of different things, just not CTO.
I think this was way before your time, but I was here. I was instrumental in getting these positions here. Emerson Watley's position was CTO. The CIO was a Mr. Bernard. So that, it goes back. And then Mr. Bernard left, and we had Emerson Watley for some time. But his position was the Technical Architect, CTO. So just, just, just to clarify, that's, that, that is the case. And then one other thing I wanted to say in response to Nikki. Your comments about who is running things right now. But I think that we've been extremely negligent. I know we have COVID, but the most important department in our district does not have have anyone with the technical background, degrees, training for what we're, the expectation. We have employees that are scrambling to do this, but I asked last board meeting if we could see a, find the financial report of the consultants that we have been using to get us through the mainframe crashing, the, the Microsoft thing and all of that. Because, because we don't have that, we really need to know the cost of of operations right here. And I would really like to see what is happening and hopefully that we can get this position moving as quickly as possible. Because our students, at this point, they don't have to come to us physically, so they could just as easily log on to. they don't have to come to us physically, so they could just as easily log on to Chebo or any other college in the state, in the country. And we still don't have a student module. And a student picked up their phone yesterday and showed it to me and says, "What do you mean? I can't register here. I was doing this years ago at my other college." So these are the, we're delayed. We should have been moving towards the student module at this point, based on the agreement that we made. But we have no one to lead Oracle and to keep their own timeline. So I think it's very important that we have the skill base necessary for the most important part of an institution who is doing all of their work online through technology.
Thank you, trustee Handy. Trustee, chancellor, did you have a comment?
I do. I would just like to say that I appreciate the comments. Nikki Brown and everyone else have really more. We do have, within our information technology department, a number of individuals who are working around the clock. We do have needs for our students. But I would just like to take a moment and really just acknowledge the work that all of the folks in our IT department are doing. And to sort of state clearly that this position, CTO position, would be a really strong support for that group. They are working with all of our teams internally to move forward with ensuring that we stay on task with our Oracle contract. And we are looking forward to having their update at our next meeting. So just wanted to throw that in, and I appreciate the comments and support on the need for this role.
Thank you. And I believe trustee Gonzalez may have a follow-up question.
You know, I hate to hold things up because there's always so much urgency in what we do. But we're being asked to approve another management position. Now, I'm not saying that we don't need that position. But I feel like we're getting it out of context, or that the context that we're getting is a little haphazard. I don't really quite understand the reporting structure. I don't quite understand why this is a classified manager rather than an administrator. There are just a number of questions that I have. And so, you know, we're asked to approve these things kind of with the idea that we have some level of understanding of what we're approving. And I personally, I just don't feel like I really understand this. And we've been burned so many times on technology. And I know this is probably not the fault of anybody here right now. But the board has been asked to trust the administration for literally decades. And it's almost always a screw-up. And so, you know, I would just feel more comfortable if we could bring this back in two weeks with a more full report that came to closed session, where we could really have a frank discussion about the personnel involved and the needs, et cetera. I personally would feel a lot more comfortable with that. But I don't want to like throw a monkey wrench into the works like, oh, no, this is the timeline. And if we screw this timeline up, we're really in trouble. So I'm just saying where I am. That's just me. One vote.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee. Trustee Handy.
Nikki, I understand your concerns, but everything hasn't been horrible. We have had some real serious issues many years ago. But since then, it's always been bad choices made. You know, I've always been very vocal about it. Chancellor Legere hired someone to do people soft, who had no people soft experience. And the board had said, "Do not interview anyone that does not have people soft experience." And when I brought it to their attention, they said, "It's okay." And we ended up with someone, "Well, what do you expect is going to happen?" A technical architect or CIO is essential. Having a college without a chancellor would be as crazy as having a IT without a CTO or a CIO. This, how it's going to fit, how that's going to work out, this is going to take months because we have to go into a search. I think that we should move this because this is something that CBT and ACJC has told us that we needed to do. We were moving, we were going to take, pretty much demote the position that was held by our previous CIO to meet with that. So this is not new. You may not remember, but this is not a new discussion, just the CTO as opposed to CIO. But I get it. It doesn't have to be the other one. But it's going to take months. So there's plenty of time for us to have those discussions and make sure that it fits in and all those questions that you need to ask. But you do not have a $7 million contract without the person who understands the entire inner workings of a technology system. And we're going to be online. We're not going to be in place. Our most important place, piece right now, is technology. That goes down, the all four colleges go down. So this is not something that should have been delayed to this point. But because of COVID, nothing happened between March and now. But it's really essential, Nikki. And I think that with a nationwide search and also having an opportunity to have, to talk to others about what this position should look like. By the time we get down to the interviews, we should have all of that nailed down if there's anything that we need to add to what Chanel Whitaker has not already pulled out and started for us. So I think it's just something really important. And we can't be penny wise and pound foolish with this particular aspect. And you know, I'm not about spending money.
Thank you, trustee Handy. Yeah, I think this is a difficult one. But I think I'd like to all take us back down memory lane, go back, look at your FICMAT, look at your CBT, and most importantly, pay attention to your FICMAT recommendations. And so I think having a void right now of somebody who is appropriately placed in that position does us more harm, having the position voided. I think it's going to be timely to be able to fill this position, given the chancellor's stated timeline of not until January. And we are looking for a robust search for this position. And I think it's important, especially given the high level of activity that we have right now in IT. I think it's a critical position. So.
And could somebody explain why this is a classified position rather than an admin? I don't understand the technical distinction.
VC Whitaker?
Okay.
Sure. I actually have a full folder on this. As I mentioned earlier, two previous chancellors worked on this. So if you would allow me to pull the folder. So like, I can, I just don't remember the reason off the top of my head, but I can provide that to Chancellor Walter, and she can provide it to the board.
All right. Sounds like a technical thing. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion on this item, we will do a roll call.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
It looks like this is going to go forward. If my vote were necessary, I would vote yes, but I'm going to abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Reese?
Yes, and I'm under the understanding that this is going to remain unfilled until the search is concluded.
Thank you. President Benia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Did we have an answer to trustee Reese's question?
About the position remaining unfilled until? Chancellor, can you confirm? That's my understanding.
So tonight, what the board has just done is approve the position. So the next step would be for VC Whitaker's office to go ahead and do a recruitment and set up the whole process for moving forward with that. That's the way we're going to go forward with this position. I can't, I don't know of any other way that we would do it.
Thank you. So that's an affirmation, yes. It will remain vacant until filled because it's going to go through the appropriate HR hiring process, search and hiring process. Thank you for that, Chancellor. We'll move to item 8.5, Consider Adoption of Resolution 20/21-12 in Support of California State Ballot Measure Proposition 16. May I have a motion to approve?
Move second.
That was trustee Brown on the second, I think?
Yep, that was me.
Thank you.
Then we will do a roll call on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Reese? And trustee Benia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes all of our action items. And we will move on to Board of Trustees reports. And I will begin with trustee Brown.
Well, I kind of got the same thing, just still working on the Steering Committee for the statewide diversity, equity, and inclusion task force. And we are trying to put together a toolkit and plans so that we could help with providing a more supportive and responsive environment for students statewide. And we also had a, the ACCT conference just concluded. And the implementation guide, the statewide implementation guide was presented at that conference. That was just, was that last week? And we're planning a town hall also to engage students and our larger community regarding how to be more responsive to the needs of our community. And the students' input on the Steering Committee has been just phenomenal. It's been outstanding. We have the student senate presidents that are really talking about wanting to be engaged and involved in the manner in which the people that are teaching them understand them and work with them. And that that should really be part of the interview process. The academic senate has come out in support of that. So it's great to see that momentum, that being responsive to student needs is being taken to heart in that way.
Thank you for that, trustee Brown. Trustee Weinstein?
Thank you. Let's see. I want to thank some students. First, I want to thank the Peralta Citizen for doing what I think was a very challenging project of doing endorsements for candidates for trustees. I know this was really a tough one, particularly if you're running. But I think that they did a really good job, if you've read the articles. They did a pretty good job on interviewing the candidates. And then also, good process in terms of their voting. You know, kind of whether you're happy with the results or not, that's secondary. But I am glad that they made an effort in this area, which is new. And I think it gives their reporters good experience. So I want to thank David Rowe, Rashid Tania, Morna Mandic, Verona Spainer, Luke Piper, Brisa Santana, Har Singh, Pamela Rudd, and a few others who really worked very hard on this. So thank you for that. I also want to thank Carolina Martinez, who is an assistant staff member for the Undocumented Community Resource Center at Berkeley City College. I think you all know that October 9th, I think it is October 19th to the 23rd is the Undocumented Week of Action. That up and down the state, there will be Zoom presentations. And I think you've seen that there is a toolkit. Berkeley City College itself is having a number of workshops. I think the first one Monday is Dr. Garcia and how she has come to where she is. So I want to thank, I want to thank Carolina for that. And I also want to thank Dr. Oakley for his efforts and his call to action for working on issues of equity. And particularly bringing out the undocumented students and making sure that they're not forgotten. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, trustee Weinstein. Trustee Gonzalez?
Come back to me, please.
Sure. Trustee Handy?
Hi, a couple of things. First, I did read the article, and I actually spoke with David Rowe. And I thought it was really well-written. I do have a concern, though. This is not the first time. The students did the interview, the forums, the Laney Tower, when, two years ago, when I was running for reelection. My concern is, I was very disturbed to hear that candidates were asked to do an interview with the Laney Citizen, Laney Tower. And then when they came on, because some of the candidates only want to talk to students. They don't have an opponent. They're already going to be in those seats. And they said they felt they were tricked. Because when they came onto the Zoom, there were no students. They were all adults, older. Maybe some of them may have been enrolled. I have seen, I want students to be able to be students. I want us to encourage students. I don't want us to push students for our agendas. And when you have people coming in and saying they were disturbed, I mean, even ex-employees of the district who are not students were on that call. And I didn't know that it was an endorsement meeting or anything. I had just heard this feedback later. So I would love it if people would just let the students do their student stuff, and we just stay out of it. Because that's a learning process for them, whether they fail, do great, or whatever. But for us to push them by having a panel that's supposed to be a student panel, and there's what, 10 or 15 people, but they're all adults, then it becomes, it takes away the importance of it. In terms of the article, I think it was really well-written. It didn't even seem like a student newspaper. And I'm looking forward to their other articles coming in. But again, let's just stay out of the students' business. Now, on the other side is the meals for Merritt College. That I'm still doing those two days a week. And I've been getting feedback from my neighbors that are Peralta students. One of my neighbors, he did a. One of my neighbors, he did a, like a, a service announcement at the end of his math class saying, do you know that they're giving away free meals? And he goes, you know, you're getting texts, you're getting emails every day. But the students are not seeing it. And when they find out the meals and the quality of the meals and the produce boxes and that we brought it right into the community, they're, they're stunned. And so I think that all the colleges are doing a great job with the distribution. But I think we're feeding more community than our actual students. We have our website. Can we just grab some students real quickly? Let them do a public service announcement and tell them, you know, you may not be reading your emails, but did you know you could pick up food for your family? Do you know we have these services available? Because even though we're sending it out, it's not working as well as we would like it to. So I, I think that students maybe get inundated. And he, he says every time he does it, they're like, different members of the class are totally surprised. So again, it's not that, the colleges are not putting out the notice. My sister's a Merritt student, she gets the notice. So it's not that, it's just that email and texts may not be the way that's reaching them. But if they're looking at the website for anything, or if you have any other thing that they're looking at, I think students relate to students telling them what's going on. So since we know that this is going to be going on for so much longer. The look on the families' faces when they pick up these boxes. Today, they brought us additional boxes that we don't normally have on Tuesday. And those boxes had a gallon of milk and yogurt and cottage cheese and celery and apples and chicken nuggets and chicken meatballs. This is, that one box was enough for a family of five to get through to the end of the week. And I don't drink milk, but I ask. And the, the price of a gallon of milk is, is outrageous. So I, I'm sure that our students would get there or send someone there if they really were paying attention or knew. So you guys may have some better ideas. I just say it's great for those that are coming, but there's so many more that we could be serving. So let's just kind of think out of the box because this is going to be going on for a while. And I would just love to know that even though I love feeding the community, because we're combined with so many other groups, I would just like to see more. And when the, and we do have students from Merritt come in, they let you know and they, they're so excited about it. But this is October and we've been doing this. I've been serving there twice a week since May, but the food's been going on for a lot longer than that. So let's kind of brainstorm and see what kind of different ways we can reach the students as we keep getting more services that can benefit them. And they, many students, Paul said, absolutely did not know about the laptops. And I know you're doing your due diligence. We just got to find a better way. You guys that are getting those students to do those videos, I think that's the key. That's the way that we get them to really hear it. So if we can just think out of the box, I think it would just go a long way to filling the bellies of our students and their families. Thanks, guys, for listening.
Thank you, trustee Handy. Trustee Withrow.
I participated in a veterans caucus for the state of California on the executive committee alternate co-chair, which is an interesting title. We're resurrecting the initiative to get credit for veterans for their military education. In a lot of cases, their training and basically what they did focused in, in a lot of ways on nursing. Where we've got in the aspect of the Navy, Navy corpsman that basically for a good 15 years have done the job of a nurse in the military. But yet we're required to go through a, a series of preliminary courses to even get into nursing school, let alone having credit for it. And we're making pretty good headway on that. We're doing it both at the, for the state of California and at the national level. We're working with the VA right now because of the COVID virus thing. Where colleges have switched from face to face to virtual, as we all know about. But VA had a, a legal restriction on the GI bill and would not, or could not reimburse the veterans through the GI bill thing when it switched from face to face to virtual. They would pay for, if, if it started out that it was going to be virtual, they would pay for it. But shifting it after it started, they would not pay for it. And we're getting that changed. Now, that's, there are a bunch of other things having to do with technical issues with respect to, again, getting credit, not only for the veterans. The, it's like the Coast Guard in the, in the, in Alameda, which covers half the world. When I've talked to the senior Coast Guard Admiral over there about having Peralta provide education while the ships are at sea, he said that there's a real problem because we don't give credit for military training. And so they, they go to private, for-profit colleges instead. So anyway, some of the things we talked about, I think we're making some headway, but the, the COVID thing has so dominated the focus and the, what people do that it's a little harder to get their attention. That's all I got.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. I think most of you know I'm an active instructor and I've got a couple hundred students right now. All being engaged in this moment in history that I think most of us are paying pretty close attention to. Part of what I'm trying to get them to think about is civic life. And I want to point out that the state assembly and the state legislature passed a law, Assembly Bill 963, and governor signed it, that requires every institution of higher education in the state to have a civic engagement officer whose job it is to think about a program of engaging all of our students in the civic life of our society. I don't know who that is at Peralta yet. I don't know whether we've got one on each campus or whether we've got one district wide. But I'm hoping that in fact, we can take that charge seriously. In my classes, I assign a term project, this term, that every student has to register 10 voters. Find them. You know, only 60% of youth voters ages 18 to 24 who are eligible in this state, only 60% are registered. So that leaves a lot of unregistered voters. Just in my department, we're going to register about 5,000 people because my colleagues and I have made this an assignment for all of our students. So that's, that's just one small department of one community college. The potential of AB 963 is actually extraordinary. If we take it seriously, if we take seriously the notion that, that our most potent weapon for the future, our most potent tool for the future is our students. Well, I think we really can change the science in profound ways. So I, look, I'm just a trustee. I don't order anybody around, but I sure would be excited if some of these college reports came back and we knew exactly what was going on with Assembly Bill 963 on our campuses. Because it's, this is now not just, you know, this is an optional, this is a state mandate. So thank you for whatever you're doing out there. And, okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Reese.
Just really quickly, actually trustee Withrow reminded me of really important work that we need to be doing at this district too as well. AB 2494, which is the Credit for Prior Learning. That should be in our policy and should be part of Peralta and the four colleges by December of 2020, where in a very short timeframe, and I don't think we have a policy for that yet. So when trustee Withrow was talking about all that he was doing, as it relates to that, that's a mandate from the chancellor's office that we need to be looking at. Because at this particular point, we're in almost November. We need to have policy certifications that are going to be submitted to the chancellor's office by December of this particular year. And secondly, just to, just as second, to, to really do a, and again, sincere hats off to every staff member, every faculty member, every administrator, every president that is just taking care of this very important, critical work of this special report that's due right around the corner, in addition and simultaneously with the Iser preparations. All, what, what you all are doing is so, and you know it, so important, but it's no small feat. And coming together and really bringing it together and making it come about and manifest in these reports is such incredible work. And do know that it's noticed and do know that we are so heartened to see the work, the hard work that you all are doing collaboratively. And if there's any staff or faculty or administrator, anybody out there who hasn't quite really helped out at this particular point, we need to be all hands on deck. There is no other choice at this particular point because there's so much hanging on this. So if you are out there and you, you haven't quite really put anything into, or not as much as you'd like to, into this process, just a, a call out to you because there is no help, no attention that will not be welcomed as we move forward in this direction. So again, thank you all.
Thank you, trustee Reese. And I also want to just echo the sentiments of all of my colleagues and trustees for the amazing work that they do in this community, day in and day out. I know the commitment to students and ensuring that students come first in everything that we do. And it's, it's wrapped into the work that the board continues to do. As you heard, Dr. Benjamin talk about operationalizing our goals and working with the executive leadership team to ensure that we're all operating on the same page. It's exciting. I think it's an exciting time for us, even with all the challenges that we've been confronted with over the past several months. The level of, I think, commitment, just personal, personal perseverance of each one of us for our students, for our communities, for our families and for ourselves is uplifting. And with that, I will encourage us to continue to move forward in a positive direction. That concludes my state, my, my, my report. And with that, I will move to announcements. Madam Vice President.
I have quite a bit. I asked Mark Johnson for them and he gave me a juicy. So here are all of the announcement, announcements. Thanks to everyone in the Peralta community who participated in the College of Alameda President Forum webinars that took place on Wednesday, October 7. Videos of the five finalists have been posted on the Peralta Colleges YouTube channel. And we welcome feedback from the community who are encouraged to send feedback to Brandon Christian and the chancellor's office. Tomorrow, we will continue the president's search with Laney College President Forum webinars with four finalists. Dr. Wei Zhu, Dr. Kenneth Gonzalez, Dr. Lisa Wilkins and Dr. Rudy Besikoff. The recordings will again be posted onto YouTube for community review and input. On Tuesday, October 20, 2020, there is a district-wide flex day. There are no student classes that day, so faculty and staff can participate in PD activities, professional development activities. And lastly, the next Board of Trustees meeting is coming up on October 27, 2020. And just one more thing, President Bunia. I forgot to, in, in my call out and the thank you to every single person, I mentioned every single person except the chancellor. So thank you also to the chancellor for leading your team. My apologies for completely forgetting you just now. And that's all I've got.
Thank you so. Thank you so much. And with that, I'll adjourn this meeting. Everyone, enjoy the rest of what's left of your evening and see you same that channel, same time, two weeks.
Thank you, everyone, for staying so late.
That's right.
All right. Be safe, everybody.